It usually says recording in progress, doesn't it?
It usually says recording in progress, doesn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, I would say that, but it is. That's why nobody can hear.
Do you want to stop and then start it again?
I can hear you now.
Are you recording now? Okay. Alright, so we'll call the meeting to order. First off, I would just like to welcome our new interim superintendent, Kim Karen. So, welcome, Kim.
Thank you.
Um, I think everybody here has had a chance to meet him. Um, we're just happy to have you. Thank you so much. Um, and you know, you have your superintendent report later, but jump in anytime, you know, we're pretty laid back here, but anything you need to jump in on, feel free.
You might be sorry you said. Thank you for that.
Uh, so first up, review of the manifest. We're passing that around. Did anybody have any questions on anything on that was emailed? We had those emailed this other day? No? Okay. Alright, then I just need a motion to accept the public and non-public minutes of December fourteenth.
I will make that motion.
Uh, any discussion or corrections?
I have one correction on the public minutes. There with me once again, on page three, um, where it said H Kennedy review the press release from the Hinsdale, uh, the Hinsdale Board of Selectment. Uh, it says here that, um, it was noted that there was not an increase in spending by the school district. And that's not exactly correct. He said that the amount that was stated was incorrect. Um, I don't think we should be saying that there wasn't an increase at all because there was. It was at the amount.
Yeah, the amount, the whatever the percent, fifteen percent or whatever. Yeah.
Um, so I think that's an important distinction to make.
Yep, I agree with that. Thank you. Anything else? Nope. Alright, so, um.
Is that why you perked up all of a sudden?
It's like Pavlov, right? You're so conditioned. Thank you very much. Alright, uh, so all those in favor, um, of approving the, uh, public and non-public minutes of December fourteenth as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Okay, great. Alright, citizen comments? We have no citizen here. Maria, if you, uh, check the zoom.
Donna, do you have any comments?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Karen, do you have any comments? Sarah?
I'm good.
Is this working? I'm good to go.
Okay, thank you.
I'm using a different device. This is Karen. I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay, Karen, thank you. Um, William, do you have any comments? Okay, Chris, do you have any comments?
Not a, uh, no, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, there might be a delay and I'm sorry. I didn't cut anyone off, but, um, Connor, do you have any comments?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, first item, board business update on COVID nineteen related items. Um, I don't know if you have anything more. I know you have stuff in your report.
Um, you know, nothing really to add, uh, beyond, beyond my report, but, um, worried about about health and safety, worried about flu. Um, you know, coming around and, uh, worried about the the new variant of, of the COVID that, uh, we're hearing about now. So, we're just continue to monitor and, uh, see how we're doing.
Does anybody have any questions for Kim about that? Alright, thank you. Um, next up, uh, superintendent search. Um, so April, I'll have April and I will have some more info, uh, non-public about that, but right now, we, um, had our first meeting back from Christmas break and we're just in, in the process. We were looking at applications and setting up, uh, interviews, but then there'll be some more information in, um, public about that. Um, the next item is to discuss policy J I C, student conduct and the student code of conduct. Um, so I requested this be put on here, um, just, just because of some issues that were happening lately that we, we've all been talking about discipline and we all, you know, know there's some issues going on. Um, and I had looked at this policy and, um, under the student code of conduct, uh, I, which we had briefly talked about, I think last month, um, and, uh, maybe in non-public, but the, um, it says that the board is supposed to review the code of conduct each year, either separately or with the applicable student handbook. And I looked back in previous minutes and whatnot, and we had reviewed the suit's code of conduct and added something to it back in twenty or twenty-one, um, when it was, maybe it was fall of twenty, probably.
Yeah.
Really, yes, twenty, yeah, that, the year we came back, the school year, first big COVID school year, to add a remote learning piece. Um, but then we, we have, haven't gone, uh, as far as I went back for several years, we haven't approved it annually. And also the handbook, we haven't really approved annually either. We discussed last year whether to print it or do it as, you know, electronic, but we didn't approve it. So, um, so, uh, the, the code of, so we included policy J I C C, which we, we have approved, uh, you know, not quite annually, but almost annually, and, and we've, you know, missed that piece in it, that, that, oh, hey, we should be doing this other piece. Um, so I had Maria print the code of conduct from the handbook, um, and it's like two and a little bit more. You'll see some page that where it starts on page forty-two with the telephone and whatnot. Just brought that out. That was just how it, you know, shows up. It's really just the first line on that page. So it's like page forty-one, forty, forty-one, and one line of forty-two in the handbook. So, um, yeah, it's right, it's in the beginning of our. It's like a sideways page, pages. Um, so, um, Kim and I were talking about this and I know it's, you know, we, we wouldn't be the board's place to like, set a meeting, rewrite the code of conduct, but I mean, there's definite things that I was looking at other schools. Um, there are definite things missing in this, like issues we're having right now and past couple of months and, but other things too that are missing. So Kim and I spoke about it and see how we all feel about having like a committee, an admin committee, um, with board participation, a board member or not, um, it usually it wouldn't be because it's going to come to us, but we could certainly then have, uh, Kim's suggestion, which I think is a good one. Whatever admin group gets together and works on it, we, we could have like a work session with, you know, a non-quorum of the school board, sort of like the behavior support, maybe the paper support type people or whomever. To like put it, give some input from the board, review it, and then, you know, bring it, bring it to the board on.
Behavior support would be the perfect.
Yeah, and, and any of us could give feedback to baby behavior support. Like if we're like, well, we're interested, we're missing this one piece, we think, or maybe try to address this, you know, you will be like our reps to this work session. So, okay, so I, if that sound good to like, to you guys as a way to approach it?
Yeah, I think it makes sense. We have, well, for me, I'm new here, right? So we have new people and, uh, and to relook at this.
Yeah.
And when I looked at it earlier this year, I was happy to see that it was more aligned to what the, the Hampshire standards, when they changed the whole tiered support. So, there's a lot of things already in place, but it's, yeah, we've got new things, cell phones, you know, things like that and um, and different kinds of behaviors that we haven't seen necessarily.
Absolutely, yeah.
So it's, it's new to us. So I think it's, I think it's a perfect time.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we say we leave it to Kim and, and the admins to make a team to go through it and then when it's kind of ready for a work session with, uh, two members of the board.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we want to take a look at the discipline policy, um, discipline practices, uh, review where we are. Um, talk about it with our attorneys, you know, are we using proper procedure for, you know, for due process, for investigations, you know, all of that kind of material. Um, and we would want to sit down as a, um, group, administrative team, and see where we are. And then I thought it might be a nice idea, um, to, um, you know, have like a working session, you know, with the behavioral support group or whoever you decide would be, I mean, we would include the board in that discussion before it's ready to come to prime time, you know, with, with the board in general. So, um, I think we'll have an opportunity for board input, uh, certainly, which is very important. Um, and, uh, do a lot of the heavy lifting, you know, beforehand. So, what kind of a, a timeframe are you thinking?
That was, but I was just gonna ask, um, because there are, you know, the behaviors, you know, we were addressing them and they're escalating. We want to put some stuff in place and plus also before new board members come on, it would be nice to kind of put this to bed with those of us who've been, you know, dealing with all of this stuff, you know, behaviors forward or just as a board. Um, so if, I don't know if it would be too, um, you know, um, too fast to say if at the, um, February meeting, you can let us know your progress and then we could get, maybe schedule the work session and then by March, we might, you know, could approve it before, because then like new board members are going to come on possibly whatever in April, so.
Let me ask Joe and, and, uh, and John about that process. The, I mean, what does it look like in terms of time? The time seemed pretty quick, you know, to me to review a document like that.
Yeah.
You know, but, um, it's important to do. Do we, do you think we can get at least a, a large portion of it done?
Well, this is the middle high school one.
Yeah.
The elementary isn't included, but I included that. I can call it a code of conduct.
Behavior code, I think.
At H E S.
Yeah.
And it describes the processes that we went through. So, so, yeah, I, you know, I think it'll be a little rushed, but I think we can, we can do that personally, because it.
What do you think, John?
Gonna need some time.
Like a little more time. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's so much there. And, and, you know, looking at this, there's, there are things that we're missing and that were, um, conducting discipline on students, you know, um, so, I mean, we only meet once a month. I mean, when's the behavioral support team meet again? I think that would be the initial starting.
I don't think we have, do we have a day yet?
No, but I don't, didn't think it would be.
Conflict between like when people can meet unfortunately, so it's been hard to find a.
Well, from what I was hearing, it wouldn't be in the behavioral support committee. It would be an ad, a smaller admin group and the board people, members involved in the work session would be the behavioral support people. Yeah, I mean, we could, we, yeah, we don't need the whole behavioral support group, but.
So, I mean, I think we definitely started, I mean, again, if it was my preference, I would choose for April. But that's just me.
Yeah, I mean, we could start it and talk about reporter back on it next month and see.
Yeah, if, if it's okay, uh, for us to take a look at it, um, certainly form a, a group, uh, to help us, uh, you know, do the heavy lifting. Um, and then report back, um, next month at the next board meeting and say, this is what we have. You know, this is, uh, bigger than a, a breadbox and it's going to take some time. Or we can really focus on a few areas, um, and, and come back to you, you know, with a, with, with something to review. So if you don't mind leaving it kind of up in the air for, you know, I've been here for fifteen minutes, so, you know, to get an idea as to where we are. Um, you know, talk with John and, and, and others, you know, about what do you think we need to do? Um, I would certainly like to get, um, our attorney's advice on a code of conduct. Um, maybe find some best practices out there in, in New Hampshire schools, uh, who, who's doing a really good job, you know, with, uh, this kind of, kind of work and get that, um, as a, as a, you know, something to work on and model against. Um, so that's going to take some time. It's, it's a big, it's a big process when you, when we've done this in, in other places where it's been, it's, you know, been a six months process, and that's with an established solid code of conduct. Um, so, I think we're going to have to look at this in stages, um, but certainly we want to, we want to, I want to do a thorough review of where we are with discipline and particularly where we are with regard to, um, conducting investigations, you know, um, allowing due process, you know, that, that whole piece of, of education.
Okay, um, I think, well, did we see, yeah, Chris is on there. Chris, we talked to John and Joe. Did you have anything to, to say?
Uh, no, not really. Uh, I was listening to what you were saying and I think that the, this is definitely something that we're all going to have to come together on and figure out what's going to work best as well as what best practices, maybe review some other practices and areas and other student handbooks out there, see what other people are doing. Because I know we're not alone on experiencing these behaviors that we are experiencing. Uh, they're going, I, I, I look at the news and I can see it happening all over the country. So I think that not rushing, but being thorough is going to be the best approach. So I, I agree with what's being said.
But we will do that, you know, I promise you, we'll sit down, make it a priority. Um, it, it's a priority for me, uh, and, uh, and we'll report back next month and hopefully tell you that we made some serious progress. Or, or this is the, the nut that we have to crack.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions or, or input? No?
No, it's great.
Yeah, sounds good. Uh, Maria, I just noticed because I looked up and everybody's name is very tiny to me. I can see your, your minutes. Is that like on the recording or is that just for you?
It's not a shared screen.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. It's this computer that works over here.
Okay.
It's not a shared. That should be recording, you should know and pick up the.
Those, okay. I just wanted to mention it just in case there was a little like snappoo there. Yeah. Um, okay, so next up, oh, actually, if it's okay with everybody, the, um, hold on, the, the cellphone, uh, policy, uh, if it's all right to swap that and the bullying data, just because those two policies a little bit kind of go together, you know what I mean, the discussion? If you guys are okay with that. But, you know, I mean, just start by swapping them and then we'll talk about the, 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 um,
You mean table turner or talk about?
No, just swap it, because next up is the discipline data, and then after that, we have the cellphone policy and if it would be okay to talk about the cellphone policy now.
I was thinking sure you weren't tabling it for another one.
Oh, no. No, 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 yes. No, thanks for checking. But, okay, um, and I, I, when I, Maria and I put it together, I, I had thought of that and then when I finally got the final copy, I just forgot that I had wanted to think about that. Okay, so the cellphone policy, um, I know, John, you mentioned in your report about, um, you know, that you, the, the, you guys, you, you know, had people look at it and you would like to continue. I know I have some questions and oh, first of all, to, um, what, what we had said in the fall was we would try this out on a trial basis of some of the changes and report back in January. And then because it's a board policy, we can't just let it kind of float out there. So we should talk about it tonight. Um, and if you could bring a updated policy for a first reading next month, and then if, you know, we'll talk, you know, talk about, see what we feel and aim for a final policy in March, because we, we already kind of, you know, I, I, I mean, I, I think we felt fine with it, but it's, it's just nervous, a little nerve wracking to have a draft tweaking trial board policy floating out there where we don't really have the stuff in writing, you know what I mean? So I think, I think if we, uh, talk about it tonight and then you bring a first reading next month, I think would be good.
So, so if you don't mind me speaking, you know, we only had one teacher that volunteered and it was.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and it was offered to everybody to be a part of, because also it became a big issue, but then when I asked for input, I received one volunteer. So I'm not comfortable being the one that develops.
Well, you would, we, we, we would, I have, we have input, I think, and I have questions and input, so, yeah.
Because I, I'm not comfortable being the one that makes it, because I have my own opinions and it shouldn't be my opinions. It should be, you know, the community and everything else of what that cellphone policy.
The community, you mean, the community. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, 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 and well, but so, just to clarify that, um, and when I had written that, written this report, which was again last week, we, we've had two other, you know, violations of the cellphone policy. What I, I guess I can continue with this. So, I think what we do need to do is though, just like the, the discipline policy, we need to review the cellphone policy and add, especially if we're going to keep allowing students during passing time and the lunchroom be able to use cellphones. It's not clear, um, which is creating some problems, which you actually recognize when you say, you know, the school board's kind of allowing this as a trial, is that, um, we need to be more definitive of, of the policy. And, and, and that's what I wrote in, in my report and I'd said, you know, I it's really the school board's, you know, prerogative of how this, this goes about. I can give you my recommendations. But again, it's my personal recommendations. I provide you data. Um, but still, it's a bigger picture.
Yep.
And I don't want to be the one, again, that I'll follow the policy, but.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yes, yeah, definitely. So what are, what are your, I mean, I, like I said, I have some questions and I have some things, um, based on one of my conversations with Matt Upton. Um, but what, what do you, oh, Joe? And then what, we'll see what the board.
So, um, I have not found, like, allowing cellphones to work at the elementary levels.
Yeah.
Actually, I feel they're, they're not prepared. I haven't been allowing them at recess or lunch.
Yeah.
On the buses, um, so I would like to stay with, if, uh, possible, I'd like to stay with the policy that exists now that sometimes children do need to have a cellphone for after school to call mom when they get home. But that it stays in our safe and is, um, picked up at the end of the day.
So maybe we could differentiate in the policy, um, elementary and, and middle high school.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we would have to.
Hmm. Yeah, because I agree with, with, yeah, elementary kids with cell phone. Julia?
I think everybody knows how I feel about cellphone policy. I think that they should not be allowed during the school day. I think if you've had two write-ups in the last week, then probably twenty kids have done it. Um, I think that we heard our assistant principal sat here last month and that he was about teachers. See, they've seen teachers that are disobeying the policy, which is a extremely disappointing, um, example being set. Uh, but I just feel like, you know, yeah, we have twelve, for instance, and if you could say, if you say to me, I mean, we're all either involved in some sort, we have kids or teachers or whatever, if you've had two that you've caught and have actually gotten to the point of being written up, then there's a whole lot more that has been included in the policy. They're, they're still kids. And there's a reason why if you give them an inch, you take a mile is one of the most popular, you know, popular cliches when we're talking about these issues. I feel like daily, and Karen is, and they ask our kids that obey the rules, that have always that balance you have to follow. Don't let a few rule breakers, whatever, everybody else. I'm doubting that our justice, a few rule breakers in this particular instance, because everybody is so married to their phone. Um, I personally am in support of going back to our policy with no cell phone stress, will I? I think it's disruptive for the learning environment. I think your student, we're talking about catch-up learning, we're talking about behavioral problems. But we're going to let them have all kinds of things that could contribute to behavioral problems larger than school, then. That's all I know.
April?
I agree with Julia. I think, I think I'm open to having it at lunch and maybe not in the halls. You know what I mean? And just at lunchtime, they can check their phones or whatever. Um, that's just kind of where I'm at.
How do you monitor that? Then something.
There's teachers in the lunchroom, right?
Just asking more of the staff, kind of police.
But it's all in one spot at that point, instead of the hallways where teachers aren't always maybe in every hallway as kids are transferring into classes and stuff like that. I'm thinking, I don't really know. Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm in the lunches ninety-nine percent of the time, so is Mr. Botts. And so it's, it's an interesting dynamics. Sixth graders, they really don't use phones, but they love their computers at lunchtime. Right? And they're playing games and we have to remind them to eat lunch and things like that. Uh, seventh and eighth graders, the computers is mu, computers are much less. Cell phones are definitely more. High school, you don't see, pretty much you don't see a computer.
No.
You, you see the cell phones. But again, high school student developmentally, they're a bit different and they have a better understanding.
Yeah.
I'm good anyway. You know, um, it's, it's still going to go down, come down to all of us as educators enforcing, enforcing the rule.
Okay.
You know, so. Yeah, unless we get to the point, Justin, where we could just ban the cellphone access.
A huge install, and then I got to get, and it was the worst thing ever for me because I didn't have cell service and I couldn't create a app bar and it couldn't work. They had a jammer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so nobody had cell service within a third radius because their kids were doing really naughty things, breaking into things and putting stuff on the our course session, you know. But they can, you can block it.
I'm, yeah, I know you can. And that's why I just mentioned, I'm not putting you on the spot, Justin.
No, you can totally block it, but then, uh, like here, we have neighbors right there. If our jammer impacts them, that's now illegal. So you have to ensure that if you jam it, none of your neighbors are impacted. We're sitting here and.
Sitting right in and.
Good luck with that.
Hopefully, we'd be happy.
So, so, sorry.
That's, yeah, that's, I was just, is it okay?
Go ahead.
I was just going down line, but.
So I think you still need to review the policy.
Oh, yeah.
And, and update it.
Mm-hmm.
But again,
Yeah.
the board's wishes for tonight, when we would start something like that and go back just to the policy, I would just need that direction.
Okay.
Yeah. My question, um, in the spirit of give them an inch and they'll take a foot is with this, you know, this new responsibility that you've given them, has, has there been pushback? I, I mean, especially you said that one of the students has four of the offenses. Has there been pushback from the kids about confiscating their phone? Have they been, you know, like?
Yeah, they push back with the teacher.
Yeah.
They will push back with the administration.
Yeah.
So then it becomes, it comes to us. And, and, and then we deal with it. But again, there's a nut, there's another piece of conflict.
Yeah.
That, that is the teacher, that do they really need to have? It's still going to happen. But, you know, so that's where there is that conflict. So, but that's our job as administrators.
Yeah. Sean?
So I have an opinion, but I was kind of curious to see if, you know, Connor had something like from the student perspective.
Okay.
Because, because I kind of want to see other sides.
Okay, yeah, we can go to Connor, go to you, and then I have a couple of things. Connor, are you still there?
Uh, yes, I am.
Did you hear Sean's question?
Yes, um, so as expected, the student position is obviously for more liberal youths, more liberal cellphone use. Um, and, whoa, okay, um, hmm. Anecdotally, I have heard amongst the student population that they're going to use their phones regardless of the formal ruling and they are going to act contrary to the rules. So, that will obviously have, in strict, in for, making the rules more strict will have an effect on the amount of work teachers will have to put in, in, enforcing these rules. But at the same time, cellphone, I understand the board's views that how cell phones could impact the learning environment.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean?
Yeah.
Sean's facial expression changed during your statement, so.
I appreciate that honesty.
Yeah.
Um, it, ah, it makes me, I, I was kind of going back and forth. I was trying to be open-minded. Like I said, I appreciate that honesty. That actually just makes me want to go back to the old policy.
Yeah. And, and have it be enforced.
It really does.
And have it be enforced, that's the.
Yep.
I could have been on board with April with, you know, maybe just the lunchroom because you've got just one spot.
Yeah.
And not in the hallways. I could have.
I just, I just feel like I'm not going to say it. I just feel like the student body saying that, you know, they don't care what, what rules we set means that they're not ready.
Means they're ready, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, and I can be on board with, with just the lunchroom because it's not because we have teachers who we know just refuse to enforce it. They refuse to enforce a lot of behavioral expectations. So that way it takes it away from this teacher's enforcing it and that teacher's not, and it puts all of you and Chris, because you're in the lunchroom and whichever administrator's in the lunchroom. So, and you theoretically would be better at enforcing. You know, if they're doing something, if they have it in the lunchroom and if they're doing something inappropriate within the lunchroom, then, you know, you can deal with it. Um, so, so I'm, I'm kind of evolving on that one that I. Um, so, so I'm, I'm kinda evolving on that one that I, I, I can see, I can get on board with April with that one, but. So I had a few questions. Like I said, I spoke with Matt Upton, uh, I talked to Wayne, um, in December and. That, as we know, we have students videoing to staff members, um, which is. And I, what my conversation with Matt Upton, Wayne wanted me to talk with him about it was. Um, about that because the, the Hampshire does have a wiretapping law. And you know, you still can't commit crimes when you're in the building. I mean, you know, there is a limit. But there's a pi- piece of that I'm gonna talk about in non-public, uh, that, that piece of it that he talked to me about, but the other part he said was. His first thing was, well, look at your policies. And, um. So we, when you look at our policy, um, it only talks about, um. Videoing, taking photos and whatnot of obscene pornographic and whatnot nature. It doesn't address just. Straight up taking photos and videos, which is also, um, very unethical and it's, you know, out of bad behavior and whatever. And in fact, doing the videos, depending on the situation, could be, could be illegal. Um, so one of the, when I was looking at. Uh, codes of conduct online, I came across, and I, I don't remember if, I think it was like Dover or Concord or one of those over there. Their cellphone policy. And, um, and I think this was kind of what. Uh, Matt Upton was sort of saying, look at your policy when it comes to the photos and the videos. Cause they're also taking photos of teachers and other students and doing things. Um, so as a suggestion. Um, in this one policy, I liked how this was worded and it said videotaping, photographing or audio recording of any individual. Without their knowledge and consent is prohibited. And then distributing audio or video recordings of individuals without their expressed knowledge and consent is prohibited. So that's not, you know, sexting, which that got put in there from an, an issue like ten years ago or half a dozen years ago. But, um, but that's just in general, videoing and because, you know. And they're doing so that I think other kids too, but staff needs to feel comfortable not being videoed while they teach, not having pictures taken of them. When they're, you know, in class, in the hallway, whatever, and then passed around. So, um, what do you guys think about adding, as a suggestion, adding that language? And I can get it to Maria and to, you know. Uh, Maria to get out to everybody.
I'm actually surprised it wasn't in there before.
Yeah, me too, honestly. Me too, cuz when that came up, when that video situation came up, I went right to it and went. Well, I mean, it falls under other things that the kids should be, have consequences for other policies, but, um, but not.
I think, yeah, I think it absolutely should be in there.
Okay, so what do you guys think? If I can put that out, send it to Maria and then.
Yeah, I agree. And what my comment I have on the phone thing is. You know, people are talking about the lunch and I'm really trying to think about it, get behind it, but you know what? There's your inch.
Yeah.
Hmm. There's your inch. Tell them they can have it during lunch, or then they're gonna carry it around.
Yeah. I mean, would you be, would we be okay with trying out with that one? Like, is now it's lunch and passing? And if we just tried out lunch, because it could, they could be monitored, for lack of a better word, a lot more at lunch than passing. I mean, I have to say. Uh, Kim and I toured the school, uh, the schools the other day, and a majority of the kids. Were walking, wa- wa- looking down at their phones in those three minutes that, that they knew they could look at it legally. Cause you know, they're still doing it in class, but you know, they're, they're walking with the phone in the hallway. So, you know, they're all taking full advantage of that, but. Um. So, and then the other piece I had, uh, oh, so, and I'll, um, send this out to Maria. To send to everybody if, if you'd like. While I was doing research on this, I found an article, um. In the Concord Monitor from, I think it was October, and they had, there was an article of a bunch of schools in that area. So like Concord, Merrimack, um, Franklin, I forget, there were a couple others, Manchester, I think, and. They had basically a lot, most of them had, I think Concord especially had this policy that we have, passing and lunch. And they said they were really cracking down on enforcement this fall, um, because they said the policy wasn't followed. And it could have been written about us. It was, um, and they even said some teachers enforce it in the room, like you have to have your phone away. Other teachers don't, and the quote was, which, you know, we've been talking about with cell phones and behavioral expectation stuff. Then it makes it harder for the teachers who are doing it. It said it right there in the article. They could have been listening in on our board meetings. Um. And so the, these other schools are making a concerted effort and I, I, there wasn't, I couldn't find a follow-up article on how they're doing. Maybe I could check back in with them later, but of enforcement. And they said, you know, consistency is key with this and just, you know, there's just, and. That's just what it is. If you have it out in class, you know, you follow the consequences. Um. And if it gets to the, the point of, like you said, this one student with four violations, that according to even our own policy. They shouldn't have a phone the rest of the year, you know, cuz they just shouldn't have a phone. It shouldn't have ever gotten to four. Because it's worse defense, right? Third, second, third offense. Shouldn't have gotten to four. But, um, so, so, um. You know, I, I don't know. That was an interesting read. Some schools that were interviewed, they have a middle school and they don't allow cell phones in the middle school. I don't know if that's anything, like if we wanna, because high schoolers could handle it better. And middle schoolers, you know, I don't, I don't know if we wanna go that route, but it's a thought.
I will say middle school teachers do better with it.
The middle school teachers.
Yes, many have baskets that, okay, you're just gonna walk into the class and it's, it's part of the routine. Okay, it, it's a way.
Yeah. That was mentioned in the article as an example, but what my thought with that is then all the kids are lining up to leave. How do you know they're gonna gra- not grab somebody else's?
Well, they know their phone.
Oh, yeah.
I mean nefariously, nefariously, you know, they're not gonna steal somebody's phone.
Yeah, you share a building, you share your special room, share your la- lunchroom, your library, all that stuff. When you share physical space.
Yeah.
Creating that sort of division of policy is a bit more challenging, I would think.
Yeah, that's a good point. Cause maybe this one middle school.
Building, then it's very different. We're talking about having Joe have one side.
Yeah.
But when they share a physical space, then it gets really gray.
That's a really, that's a good point. Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, okay. Um, so. So what I'm, oh, I did have one question, sorry, about the, uh, of con- um, consequences for violating the policy first defense. You know, it says that it's confiscated and electronic device, you know, it's confiscated for the remainder of the school day. So if a teacher confiscates it, does that teacher keep it or does it come to you guys and they have to pick it up in the office?
It, it needs to come to us, cuz that puts it undue, again, pressure again on.
On the teacher, yeah.
You know, at least we have enough people around. We have, um, pouches. In the office, that's, we can, we label it, so-and-so student, John Barth's phone, here it is. And then they would come at the end of the day to pick that up.
Okay.
So we do have that process in place, cuz again. It, it's a, it's a unnecessary, in my opinion, conflict for the teach, between the teacher and.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Teacher leaves early.
Issue, it's a lot of teaching.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, my teacher leaves early. Now they have to be like.
Right.
Where am I gonna go with this phone?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, then I'll get in the phone call.
Right, yeah.
Where my kids.
It's locked in so-and-so teacher's room. Okay, um. Alright, so those were my questions. Does anybody, oh, let me ask a question. I don't know much which microphone to talk into. But, um, so, uh, okay, so with, so Joe and John, uh, Chris, do you have any, any thoughts to add?
Um, I, I would, as I sat here listening, and I think the important things for us to all realize is that these policies. We, we have policies for everything. We have policies against fighting. We have policies against, um. You know, harassment and all sorts of other things. And there's gonna be that select few, regardless of whatever policy we put in, that are gonna continue to break it. Um, no ma- no matter what the policy is, I think we're all aware of that. Uh, so, so the, the cell phones. Uh, I'm okay with either one. I will definitely enforce whatever the board says we can enforce, but I just wanted to put that, that little bit out there and I think we're all aware of that. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, Chris. Alright, but actually. Actually, when Chris just said that, if, based on the policy, they can only. Violate it three times and you don't have to worry about it cuz they don't have it the rest of the year.
Hmm.
So, and if we stick to it.
Theory.
There's, there's no in theory, once they hit three.
It's, it comes back again that maybe the primary issue and challenge for this policy is enforcement.
Yeah, well, we just have to enforce it.
We allow gray area, that gray area is blocked.
But, yeah, we can't.
We can't keep the phone.
Well, no, 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 you give it back and they're not allowed to bring it to school.
So, can, can, can I speak to that?
Yes, yeah.
We, we had this, this issue last year with the same student and he reached that and we enforced that. And we, I've had his parent come in and pick it up and I've told his, his parent, he is not to bring this to school. The next day, the phone's right back in the main office. It's right there. And getting buy-in from the parents is something that we're gonna struggle with regardless of whatever the policy is. Because that parent, again, got in my face the next time they had to come get it. And said, you will not tell me what I can or cannot have my child do.
Can we jam individual, I know, yes, we can't jam individual phones, right?
And, and then, and one last thing, we can talk about this.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Is that, you know, I hear from parents, I bought the phone, it's my phone. And I give it to my kid. It's not their phone.
Well, then they, the parent can use the phone in their workplace and it shouldn't be here. Oh, I know, I hear you, I hear you, but that's a weird, that's a weird thing to me, you know, I don't know.
I've heard it about vapes. It's my vape, I want it back.
I've heard the exact same thing as well.
Okay, so. Wow, interesting.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, so I'll send Maria that language, um, and so how do we wanna proceed then? Talk about it again next month with that new language and try to sleep on it.
The new language about photos, videos and dissemination, but no, no, no change in the phone use policy this month.
Unless we have suggestions, um, you know, to bring to next month. Or to, to change the tr- the trial period, you know what I mean? Cuz the trial period, so we, you, any, you know, we can talk it over and tweak it, right?
So, so, I mean, whatever we do, I just need to give people, parents, time to realize this is what's gonna go on. So, you know, again, sending home the policy, this is what we're gonna enforce beyond the, the filming piece. So I just need that direction.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't think that's what we're, we, we hired anything out tonight. Um, any input from any of the other? I was like, I was talking to the building people, but anybody else have any thoughts?
Um, well, I certainly have some thoughts around policy development, um, and, and how, what the process is, uh, for that happening. Uh, with the, uh, with the administrative staff in the school, um, and the board. Um, so, you know, I'm looking at it from a process point of view and trying to figure out, um, you know, kinda help with that. Um, in the future.
And we've never done it this way before. We, we've never had the administration come to us and say, can we do a trial? For a little while and see on the policy, you know what I mean? So, so this is kind of new territory for us, where we were even allowed an unwritten trial to happen, you know, just verbal.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification.
So I, I just wanna say, I do think that it needs to be communicated very clearly to families because. I can tell you that a lot of times the people texting and calling are the parents. So.
I'm glad you said that because that was also in some, some of the things, ones that I've seen where it's very clear that, you know, parents call the office. Like what we said a couple, last month, if you wanna, you know, get in touch with your child, call the office. Don't call your child during school. Because it should be off when they're in class and don't, you know, so some policies also had that in it. I forgot all about that, thank you.
Community communication is critical. We did, we got, we were in, we had a good stride with communicating with. School community, with the greater community.
Yeah.
When we were dealing with all of the horrible things we were dealing with. And I think we set a precedent for some really great communication. And I think that's kind of slipped a little bit. This would be something that would need to have that level of communication.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
Yeah.
Um, I, I will offer something to that effect, um, that with those, with those parents, and I've, again. Dealt with this type of parent, that they're gonna pull, or I won't say pull, they will use. I give my child permission to call me or text me whenever they want, no matter what you said. So we're gonna have that uphill battle regardless of what the policy is. I've had a couple of parents use, say that to me last year. Uh, where it was more strictly enforced, and I'm sure that we would get to that point again this year regardless.
I think that's true with any rule you're gonna have, any, especially if it's changed something like this, you're gonna, you didn't take your heels in and you. Stick to your precedent and you enforce it and you know you're gonna have those bumps and you know you're gonna have those challenges with certain families and parents. If it's worth doing, then it's worth doing, right?
Yeah, I agree with that. And just to give Kim some context, so our policy as it's written, you'll see, you know, it says, you know, you're, they're prohibited during school day. Need to be in your locker. And that's been our policy for, since, you know, two thousand and six. And, um, the previous building administration just didn't enforce it. So we're not gonna enforce it. That's too much. Parents don't want it. It's too hard to do. We're not gonna enforce it. And, um, you know, within the past several years, so. Then this is where it kinda came about. Okay, now we need a policy that actually makes sense and we can enforce, rather than one that. They're not even gonna enforce at all and, you know, having it in your locker all day, if, if it's one thing if they wanna do, but enforce it, so, you know. That's like the background on that. Um, so where are we then? For the next step, so for, for John and whatnot, um. I mean, I don't know if it's something to communicate to parents, it, it, that, I don't even know if it was communicated to parents really and by any of us, other than Adam. The meetings that, that that was a trial period of letting it.
Know that there's allowed to have it during lunch.
No, it was put out in my.
Okay.
Letter at the beginning of this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So maybe an update that we're still reviewing it, you know, ongoing review of it and we've added. This language, you know, that's we're gonna add about the photos and the videos, um.
Well, I gotta wait for that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I'm, I'm gonna get it to Maria tonight, uh, you know, and, and you guys, cuz you guys were alright with that, right? We'll have, we'll take a vote on that and see, just so they know, okay, this is the next step. This is the next thing we're adding to our. Still a little ongoing trial. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's someone has their hand up in the, uh, so whenever you're.
Is it, is it, yeah, it's not citizen comments. Yeah, is it an administrator or a somebody? Yeah, I mean.
I don't know how that works.
Well, we, it's up to you. We don't usually do that. I mean. Yeah, I guess there's not that many people. I mean, we don't yet, we usually don't take questions in the middle, but, um, but, yeah, there's not that many people on go, you can go ahead.
I was just wondering if, if it was so difficult, um, getting staff to enforce a very simple policy of. The phone stayed in the lockers. Is it really realistic to put all this time and effort into developing a way, way more detailed? Policy that those staff is now gonna have to enforce, just wondering.
I mean, I feel it is because there's some very, um, disruptive, possibly illegal behaviors going on. So I think it's, we have to address it because behaviors are so at that point right now.
I, and I think. By allowing as much gray areas we do, it makes it harder to enforce. It's black or white. No phones between seven fifty and two forty in the afternoon or.
I guess that was my point, Julie, is, uh, is maybe that that's the policy. It's, it's obviously leading to a lot of issues and.
Right, that, you're right, that.
I'm confused about the gray area piece though, because it's like.
Cause if you, they can have it on there, so, I mean, it used to be in your locker. You're not supposed to be carrying it around at all, but now we're saying. You can have, well, to use it at lunch, you have to have it.
Yeah, but it's.
In the hallway and use it, you have to have it. So you have it on you and on all the time. So you're looking at TikTok while your teacher's up there.
But that's the thing with the policy and I was reading about some of these other schools that when you're not in passing and not, I'm just, you know, just. Cause I would love to go to put them back in the lockers, but you know, I, I don't know if that's gonna be feasible. Oh, absolutely, but I, you know, just talking through, I don't know how feasible that, that would be, but, but, no, but if, other place I've seen, and I think in, in this article. One of the, two of the schools said about, if it's, if it's, um, in the class, like if it's not passing your lunch, it's, it's in your bag or your, and it's off. You know, and, you know, kinda like, you know, when you go to a concert or this or wherever. But you're sort of, please turn off your cell phones or silence them or whatever, but, you know, I, and I, I see what you're saying, but I, I, I didn't think. And maybe, maybe I had more faith in our, in our students, but I thought, uh, when John brought this to us, that, alright, it's very clear. Not in the classroom, yes, in the halls, yes, at lunch. Like, why is this so hard?
Cause they're kids. This is the same room. Why do you have a curfew? Why do you make rules about what you have to eat for dinner before you have dessert? Why do you have, and there are as many adults that break rules.
Oh, oh, a hundred percent. We need to address.
Give them an inch, they're gonna take a mile. And I think we're asking our staff to enforce what I'm gonna continue to call the gray. They're gonna take a mile, and I think we're asking our staff to enforce what I'm gonna continue to call the gray area, because even if you have it during school or you don't.
Students in high school don't use their lockers, I'm just gonna tell you that.
Yeah, it's gonna be in their back pockets.
They don't use their lockers for books or anything like that, very few, middle school, oh yeah, they're just trying to stuff all their stuff in. But the high school students, they don't use a locker, and, and God forbid, I was told I had to put my phone in a locker. Well, not uncool, but also I'm worried that even though they could get a lock, that somebody's just. So I just, you need to understand that, that they don't use lockers.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying the policy should say in your locker, because I don't think we can afford that, I just, your phone, no phone. You can't use your phone, from the minute you walk into school till the last bell rings.
And that would be part of, of change of the policy.
But it would still be on their person. Then I, I know, and like, just to play devil's advocate, you said, if it's on their person, they're gonna use it, so.
They are, but now, now we're gonna, they are gonna, people are gonna break that rule, kids are gonna try, we've had our student rep tells that that's gonna happen. We need our administration to crack down on enforcing the law.
So what you're saying is if you make it not lockers, which is.
Tell them they don't have, they can't have.
Yeah, no, but just not use them, that means.
No, no phone usage.
That means anywhere they see it, no question.
No phone usage.
Yeah.
This is might be small, but if you're gonna do that, you might wanna also add that it can't be used as a calculator in math class. Because that's the first thing they do is they pull out that, and even if you have a calculator to give them, they, they don't wanna use it, they wanna use the phone.
Do we have calculators, is that the other thing, or do we have calculators for everybody if we say you can't use your phone?
But they also use it for like a Quizlet, I've seen it used there.
Yeah, that's true.
Can they do that on their computer? They can use Quizlet on their computer.
They could, but I've seen it for, for high schools, it's much easier, just using.
Yeah.
Your phone, just type in the code, so I'm just saying. Again, we could talk about this forever, there's gonna be scenarios all, all around. It used to be the hat rule was the big thing, now it's.
Oh, yeah, we're not even talking about cheating. It, it's good, cause some of the things you guys are saying, cause we're not there, but that's another intended consequence, you know, saying no phones, oh, will they use it for Quizlet? Well, but they, can they use their computer, but then, you know what I mean, so.
We provide them with a computer to use, correct?
Yeah, they all have laptops, and you can use Quizlet on your laptop.
Cell phones are computers.
It is, it is, I would rather they use the one.
I'm sorry.
I think we're making, that was my question before then, some of these other variables, so, yeah, so. We're, it, obviously extending the trial period at least until. They bring a policy to us, and the question is, is that gonna be in February?
We have a policy already.
Oh, no, we actually, not, yeah, this policy has been changed. Yeah.
But what's gonna change is has nothing to do with the trial period, the trial period of use in the hallways and in the lunchroom, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay. Well, yes, and so, so if we decide we wanna stop the trial period, then in February, they would bring us an updated policy. Not mentioning any of that, going back to this, but with the, also the photo piece, because even though we say they're not allowed to use it, you need. What's gonna happen if they violate it, yeah.
We already have that.
No, no, we'll, we're gonna add it.
We're gonna add something to it, but we already have a policy that says everything, don't use your phone. These are the consequences, we're gonna add one thing to it.
Yeah, so that's what we have to decide, I guess, is do we wanna? Cause if we go that route and have John bring us an updated policy in February, right, for first reading, we need to tell him what to do with the trial period, like. Like we're not putting the, the new things in, like his new things in, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, you're making this very complicated. How is the trial period going and are we done with the trial period?
It's been relatively fine, but again, we, we're having this discussion. So my suggestion is second semester, which will be, for the end of semester is January twenty seventh. That gives us a weekend, whatever, a week and a half, two weeks to get the word out. And then we can look at changing or adding to the policy later, but we do have the policy in place. We have the consequences in place, we can send this information out to parents and get that out. Before the end of the first semester.
But we're gonna communicate what, that they're allowed, still allowed to have it? Okay, we're back to the, okay, so even, so we're all in agreement then to go totally back and not have it even at lunch, are you?
I'm just saying that's what, that's what Gina suggested.
Policy, the, the trial period is the lunch period, the lunch and the passing.
Yeah.
We're gonna add that, that's fine, but that's a whole nother thing. Trial period, is it over, or do we wanna say lunch period only and no hallway? Right, that's the question. What, we'll get to that.
About the lunch period or the?
About the pictures.
Oh, no, the pictures is going in no matter what.
Understood.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah.
The decision we need to make right now is trial period's over and we go back to nothing, no phones, or trial period continues with just the lunchroom. That's the same. Don't you think?
Yes, that's, yes, that's the way to go, Sean, okay, let's, let's go down the line. Lunch period only or lunch and passing?
Or nothing.
Or nothing, thank you, yes, or nothing. Cause I, cause I don't like the thought of extending the trial period.
No.
No, okay.
I, I really wanna create an environment for the kids that. They're gonna. Be happy with, right, but. We have rules, rules need to be followed, and we were just told that they're not going to be, so I'm right now sitting here. A little disappointed and am in a position where it's like, no, not at all, at lunch or anything. Just not.
I'm inclined to say okay at lunch.
As am I, I, I mean, I, I appreciate Connor's honesty, but I don't wanna.
No, I appreciate the honesty completely, cause I, I wanna know, even when I'm talking to my kids at home, I say. You know, it, I know I'm not gonna wanna hear it, but tell me anyway, I wanna know where we're at, I wanna know where it's standing.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm, 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 I agree with Gina, I'm, I'm okay with, with lunch, uh, cause it's, like.
It's a control.
Yeah, and, and I don't wanna put it necessarily so much on Connor's comment.
And, and that's not, and that's not what.
I don't think, no, no, I didn't, no, I didn't think so, but, um. So we got two for lunch.
Wrote to me?
Yes.
Okay, so I am, I'm inclined to do it till for lunch and not passing in the hallways, um. I am in, I'm a half-full kind of person, so I like to think most of our kids are following it. And there's a handful of kids that aren't, you know what I mean, I understand there's probably more than that, but I'd like to give them a chance. Basically.
That's a good way to look at it. Yeah.
Yeah, I said earlier, it's not, I know it's some, you can't assume everybody's breaking the rules, but. It's hard to force up when it's not. I, I think you're probably all pretty aware of how I feel on this side. So, but.
So how would that be, um, we, we need, I probably a mo- a motion to. Direct on the trial period, the, the trial period of passing a lunch is over, based on the data. And then things that, you know, people, people's attention stuff has been happening, um, and other information we've gotten. That, uh, um, we would scale it back into the policy, scale back that and put just in the policy, well, actually we do. Expand the policy to have lunch, um, and the video and um, photo pieces. And uh, we can have a draft, you know, Maria can work on her, Maria can remember, work on a draft policy. For next month, is that, I know that's very convoluted.
So basically it would change as of February twenty eight, it would go to just not, cause that would be our, end of our trial period for both, right? Oh, sorry, no, that's not what I meant, sorry. Yeah, so, um, so if I'm understanding it right, February twenty seventh is the last day for. January, God, gonna say it again? Okay, so January twenty seventh would be the last day for our trial period, our policy moving forward from the twenty eighth. Right, would include lunchroom but not passing areas, and that gives you time to inform parents of the changing policy. And we would update the policy.
Yeah, to actually write the policy.
Right? And basically narrow that all down and one.
Thank, thank you, April.
You're welcome, yeah. Okay, so we need a vote to.
Yeah, we need a motion, we need a motion for, but April just.
Do that motion since I just said it.
Alright, and just because I have to, are there any more questions? No, alright, all the other papers say aye?
I oppose now.
Okay, the two noes and the, yeah, okay, alright, so Maria, that was three, yes, and then two noes. Alright, thank you, everybody, that was a rough one to wrap our heads in. Um, so much so, I've lost my agenda. Alright, um, so then, uh, John and. Yeah, I think it's middle high school, right, just to the, I mean, Joe has his discipline-ish numbers in his, uh, in his report. So, uh, John and Chris, so the write-ups.
Does Joe have this here?
Joe's, oh, no, yeah, Joe's is in your report, right? Yeah, Joe's is in his report, which we, which.
John and Chris?
Yeah, I said, that's why I said Johnny Chris. Go ahead, did I, oh, sorry, Johnny Chris.
Well, I mean, the numbers basically for, you know, December speak for themselves, it's a short month. But there's been a definite uptick and, and, you know, we have less school days and we, you know. And we've even seen it into January, I, I think, you know, when we came back from Christmas, Chris and I thought that. Oh, we'll at least give it, give us four days of a, a little bit more calmness, and it hasn't been that way, there's just. But, you know, a different energy, um, and again, mostly it's middle school. But as you can see, in December, high school went up from, you know, previous years, but especially this year to thirty-nine referrals. Um, some of that, I think, is an emphasis is that Chris and I put on that. We ask teachers, they need to write the referrals to us, you know. So that's a good, that's a good thing, you know, is now we get a clearer picture of what's going on. Um, and they weren't always doing that, and so, um. Yeah, so, it, you know, I would expect in December typically is, is a large number of referrals, just everybody is hyped up and is ready to go. Um, but, and, and that, it just popped into my head is that we had to battle, meaning you've got to write the referrals for us.
That's good to hear, cause we pushed that, you know, yeah, so that's great.
So, um, I, I think that's definitely a contributing factor, and I don't know if Chris wants to be still around, yeah, say anything to that.
Uh, no, I'm just gonna mirror what John said, we're getting many, many more referrals from teachers. Even if they're handling it at classroom level, they're doing very well with uh either logging it themselves and sending us the referrals, just to double check. Or just sending us the referrals in general, the lesson, I'll say, hey, I had this behavior from this child and this is how I dealt with it. So we're, we're getting better communication with that overall.
Great, cool, that's good to hear, any questions about that? Um, do you wanna talk about Joe's data, like flip back to Joe's report or wait until Joe's report to do it? Wanna talk about it now? Okay, so if everybody could just flip to Joe's report, since we're in the mode of thinking about, uh. You know, referrals and write-ups.
Kind of mirrors a little bit what's been on middle high school with, uh. You know, less, less school days in November, December, you have more referrals. You know, you know, a few more newer, like nine new students, hadn't been a referral in September, October. Had four more cases of bullying, things, um, and, um. You know, I think the uh, the aggressive action ones, that's when we have to evacuate the classroom. What students are. Out of control and unsafe for others around them, that went down, however, today there was three. Eight thirty, uh, sorry, ten thirty, uh, twelve thirty and two o'clock.
Yeah, spaced.
All spaced out, but free, go back to agency one day. So that interrupts, you know, the, the vibe, the climate for those children in the classroom. You know, then you have to piece things back together the next day when they return to the classroom, the students. Who did have aggressive behaviors, return to the classroom, you've gotta settle them back down again.
Does anybody have any questions for Joe on that? Well, thank you guys for this, because and, and it's, it's helpful to see that, you know, like you said, teachers are doing the write-ups now and we are tracking them and. And, you know, even, even at the elementary school, you get a better picture of it all, so. I think that's exactly what we, we all had hopefully started that discussion, so, thank you. Okay, uh, well, the S R funded emergency class coverage option, so this was the discussion about. Um, teachers who, um, and it was mostly at, um, John's building. Um, teachers who, when they are covering uh, for another teacher and, you know, so they lose a prep period. And we had the whole discussion that they are contractually obligated for seven preps, but they're generally getting ten throughout the week. Um, so we had, um. I think it was maybe November even, I don't think it was December, I think maybe November we talked about it, yeah. And we were gonna come back and, and I decide seven or ten preps to compensate, like we were in favor of compensating them for sure. Um, seven or ten preps, seven, cause they're contractual, ten, and, and we said, okay, we, we, one thought was. Only compensate them once they have, um, had three subs, because now you're dipping into their contractual. So that was one thought, but then there, we, I remember we had a discussion that the tracking of that logistically would be a burden on somebody. You know, so I guess at this point, we just have to let the administration know which number to go with, so that then they can proceed that way. So thoughts?
I'm happy to start again. I, uh, personally, again, as part of the negotiation team as well, I feel like we. Need to offer, give our, sure, the, the full seven planning periods that are, that's in the contract. I think that it's great that in most instances we can offer them ten. But if the need arises that we need coverage for a classroom that is based on the number of periods, the number of hours. We're at work, I don't think they should be compensated extra, anything below, if we dip into their seven, then that's an entirely different story. But I personally feel like that we need to give them seven before offering any additional potential.
So my only question with that is that it happens on a Monday. That you need a teacher in a classroom, do you wait until Friday to decide if you're gonna compensate them for that? You know what I mean, like, cause they haven't had, oh, I haven't had any of their prep years at that point, right?
I'm not saying you don't, you don't decide it on the day, Monday, you know, if a Monday, yeah, she, they filled it on Monday. But that was the only time this week, so they're still getting nine, so it's accumulative over the week. If they dip down below there, if, if, you know, they only, they need one, two or three, then they're still within their contract, still within the CBA. So it's not, it's not a daily base, it's a weekly base, which is how the contract's written.
And when, if we decide to do that, just to play thinking ahead to the people who have to implement it, like, how? I don't know if somebody in your building would have to track that, how, how orders would that be?
Yeah, I mean, but we, we track it now, you know, whoever's covering or, you know.
So you'll say like, teacher A is covering for this teacher and that's one prep they, you, you, you track it now, how many times they've done it?
Well, we haven't tri- tracked the prep, but, but we are tracking who's covering what class.
Okay, so you'd have to split, somehow track teacher A, how many times they've done it this week.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if I, as a teacher, we're covering a class, okay, I'm covering this period for so-and-so or Chris Ponce. And maybe then also the next day, Chris is out and then I'm covering again, cause we don't have coverage. So now I'm at two, but I'm still good, the way I understand it.
Yeah.
And then when, once, and even the third, we're still good. It's when we hit that four.
The four that you, then you dip along the seven, right?
So.
Yeah, and that fourth one is what they're gonna, they would be compensated for under this.
Yeah. It's, it's doable, it'll be cumbersome, but.
But it's doable to try.
Because we're already.
Already tracking.
Tracking.
Per row, which.
Now, the timesheets may be.
Well, I mean, their, their salaries, teachers are salaried, so do they put in?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to have time and effort reporting. For it because it's coming out of a grant. Coming out of Esser. I also want to point out that Esser ends September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, so we could conceivably creating a fiscal cliff.
Well, no, I mean, it would end when, I mean, this would just be for this school year. I thought we were gonna talk about it for just the end of this, rest of the school year.
Needs to be clear.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, again, I think it's.
Yeah, I was, I thought it was just for this school year.
I, I, I don't, I don't begrudge teachers getting paid. I understand that. I, I, but I worry that. It's something that they're gonna want next year or, you know.
No, I am adamant, adamant, adamant that it'd be in the form of an MOU and it has a specific time.
And it, and it fills the need because like we looked at the contract, the CBA after.
MOU, the current thing says seven, you have planning periods, we're not changing that.
If we're giving them.
Money.
If we're giving them money, we're compensating them.
Well, but if we do an MOU, they, they have to vote on it and they don't get a vote on this. Right? Or do they not have to vote on it? Everything we've done with the union with an MOU was both sides. This one, they, this is a board decision. Because, because right now in this.
Spelled out.
But that's my question, though. Yeah, spelled out in MOU might be two different things because, right, because do they have to, every MOU.
Should agree to it.
I, I disagree with that. I think it's a board decision. I don't think we need agreement on that because, because the CBA says, because remember, we didn't know before and then I looked it up after. That the principal can determine and it wasn't emergency and have a teacher sub during a prep at the principal's discretion and there's no limit on it. According to what they agreed to already in the CBA. And Kim, jump in. I don't know if you're following any of that.
I, yeah, trying to follow, trying to follow everything here and. You know, I'm not familiar enough with the, with the contract, you know, at this point. So I, I, I'd like to, like to review that. And, you know, decide, you know, which direction we want to go in. I agree with Jody, you know, that. You know, if teachers are, are asked to do something, you know, beyond their contract. There should be some form of compensation. If there are emergency situations that arise, you know, we have to be able to call them. Teachers to, you know, cover classes or do something else that maybe is, is beyond the scope of their contract. If that's already in, in the, in the teacher's contract, I think we're fine. There's, is there any mention of compensation? For those, okay, so, so, you know, I, I think it's a, a nice thing to do for the board. You know, that you clearly stipulate that for this time period only because of the emergency situation that is, you know.
The staffing.
Staffing issues, et cetera. You know, you'll compensate teachers for anything beyond the contract. If it goes beyond that. You know, beyond that emergency period, you know, I agree that you need some form of. MOU or, you know, talk about it in, in contract negotiations. You know, that's how I would, would approach it. You know, but, you know, I'm, I'm speaking from ignorance, which is not unusual, I guess. You know, I, I think we'd want to look at that contract and, and make sure we're not doing anything, you know, that. Is inappropriate.
Yeah, and we, then we discussed it la, like I think last month after we looked at the contract. That, that, yeah, he has the, the emergency situation. No compensation, you can, he can pull him for all ten preps if you want. So if I'm hearing you correctly, so because the emergency situation, we, we defined it last time as for the rest of this school year. So, and because it would follow the contract that we can just, you know, at, at, at discretion of the principal, call it emergency situation. A motion would cover it and to be specific. Because I, I don't think they, we need to get them to agree to this. Because it's in their contract already.
Sean, what, what, where are you more comfortable with an MOU?
I like to have things, anything outside the contract be spelled out, yeah.
But.
Well, we, Kim just did mention that we could be vague and just say. Compensation of, for anything outside of the contracted parameters. So we can be very vague because contract parameters say seven preps.
Yeah.
I was answering that question.
Yeah, outside of their contracted time. This is not a negotiation issue. This is something the board is, we had, the. That the administration has the right to do in the contract they've already agreed to. And we just want to take the extra step to compensate them for it. And for a certain amount of time. I mean, that, that's how I'm seeing it. It's not a negotiable issue. I mean, and if we thought it was, then we should have talked about that a couple of months ago and got them on board because the more this drags out, they're not getting paid and you're still using them.
Yeah.
I, I'm pretty sure that I said what I said then.
Okay, I don't remember hearing MOU because I, I just don't, I just don't, it's not a negotiation issue.
I, I don't think it's, from my experience, that wouldn't be a negotiation issue, but I do agree that, you know, whenever you have the time. To develop an agreement, you know, with, with the union, that you do that, you know, and that way. You know, you don't fall back on a, on a board motion. To say, you know, this is the agreement, this is the understanding. So I guess, I guess I'm agreeing with Sean. You know, that's.
The bottom line is, I do want to compensate them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we all.
I wanna, I, they had, all through COVID, they have done so much for us. I want to compensate them. I want to do it. I just want to do it the right way.
So it won't hurt. You know, I, I think a board motion would suffice. But an MOU. Feels like more solid ground to me. Say, you know, this is what we want to do. It's, it's not a bad thing.
We're not modifying anything. We're following the current contract.
Yeah, that's right. I agree with you.
We're not, we're not making any changes. An MOU is a modification by definition, but we're not modifying anything. We're just saying that if we, if, if, if circumstances arise, that we require them to work outside of the con, contract. Then, then we're gonna compensate them for that, but an MOU implies there's a amount of patient being made. All we're doing is saying we're sticking with how the CBA is currently written.
Yeah, I'd like to hear Joan's answer to the question.
Happening, right.
So right now, we've been good because we have college students home and, and that's been extremely helpful. So we've had a lot of new faces, so we're good for.
Couple weeks.
Close, yeah, close to the end of the month or another week or two.
Yeah.
But that's been extremely helpful that we've been able to have college students come in. And we've had less staff out. I mean, it was definitely October, November. We had a lot of, a lot more staff illnesses. So, but having the college students here has been fantastic. I mean, today we had one, two, three, actually four. College students in the building subbing. So, but that's gonna go, go away.
And I, you probably don't have it off the top of your head, but I'm curious that during that period in, in October, when there was a lot of staff. Absences, were any of the staff that were subbing doing it more than seven, four times?
I don't, yeah, I wouldn't have that number, but we were asking them quite a bit, you know.
Okay.
But I wouldn't, I couldn't tell you exactly.
April and then I do have a question, but go ahead.
If I'm understanding it right, then I'm for the, if they do it before time compensating them. Because it'll, it'll fall under them going above and beyond what we expect for them already. So that's kind of my, it's kind of where I land on it. And to the end of this year, that's.
Yeah, because we have to find the emergency period as this year.
Yeah, this rest of this year.
I think anything after this year.
Right.
If we're going to do it, then we need.
If it was gonna be a regular thing.
So I know how I feel about, you know, formalizing dotting I's, crossing T's. I'm not going to vote against giving the teachers the money. I'm not, but I want my, you know, in the record that I do feel that should be more normalized.
There should be a MOU rather than.
Like I said, we don't need to get that specific. We don't need to go into that anymore.
Okay.
You know, but, because I'm not gonna vote against giving the teachers the money, so.
Okay, I, I did have a question, I, about an MOU.
Why?
Well, no, but I'm just saying, but I just have a question about it, just because in the fut, even the future rest of this year, if something comes up again. If, if in this case, we would say we would do it, you say something, you know what I mean? Who knows what could be brought to us even next month? And say, we said seven. And sat, you know, our negotiator sat down, you know, with the union and they said, no, we want ten. You know, then what? So just, this is, that's one thing for, if, if. This, you know, bring something that different brings, is brought up to us and we want to do an MOU, that's just, that's the main reason I'm against an MOU is that. What if you can't come to a decision? That's, that, that's what I wanted to say. So, so you got your piece that you wanted to say? That's what I wanted to say about the MOU.
Didn't change my opinion.
No, I, I didn't, I'm not trying to change your opinion. You got on the record with yours.
Anyway.
And I want to get, no, not anyway. You got on the record with your piece. I'd like to get on the record with my piece, that's all.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, yeah, now that we're both on the record, yes, so. Who would like to make?
I will make the motion to pay the teachers for the fourth and consecutive times they've been asked to sub in a.
Until.
Until the end of this year.
Do we need the amount or no? Because we've already talked about the amount and the other.
I think the motion should be specified.
Should be in the motion.
For sure. I don't know what it is.
I was like, I don't know.
Rule maker.
I know, I can't. It was, it wasn't a mountain.
I would say it was thirty-five dollars. I thought it was thirty-five dollars.
It was thirty.
I think, I recall it.
I think that's what it was, if I remember talking about it.
But can you, can you also require a time and effort reporting? That's important.
Yeah, how would, yeah, why would you like that?
Well.
Are they in the motion or?
Yeah, I, it just, we have to have the time and effort because, and Erica's gonna have to do that.
Because we need to report to the grant.
The grants, because it's grant money.
We need to track it.
Yeah. I don't think it'd be a problem. I just. Want to make sure it's in there.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we compensate the teachers for the fourth and consecutive. Times they've been asked to sub for a period for thirty-five dollars till the end of this year and also require them to fill out a. Time and effort report.
Is, is it them filling it out or somebody, they fill it out themselves? Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's an acknowledgement that they're being paid that thirty-five dollars through a grant.
Can I make one radical change? You said for, at the fourth and consecutive, it's fourth and subsequent, subsequent, yeah, whatever the right wording is. Yeah, that's all.
Do you want to add per week?
Yeah, we should.
Yes. Yes, please, please put a time specific. Per day, per week, you know, maximum of, you know, how many times they've. Filled in.
Yes, thank you, Justin. No.
That was.
No, it has to be.
Yeah, that was.
Yes, okay. Do you feel comfortable?
Get all that, Maria?
I was gonna say, do you feel comfortable reading it back?
Well, I, it's a mess.
Sorry.
I, I'm having a hard time with the wording of the four and subsequent.
The four.
Four, four, they did four, four, because it's too giant, for four.
For the four.
Periods and all subsequent periods per week. To cover four period, no, get rid of the first four, you were right without it. The F O R needs to go, F O R.
This?
Yeah, yeah. No.
No, the other one.
The other four.
Cover four periods and subsequent periods per week at thirty-five dollars per period. And, and then that, until the end of the school year. So then get rid of per period until the end and then get, then it's four here and then you got.
Oh, so that's not guys that got.
And then. For the grant assignment, effort report will be required. Perfect.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah. All right. So then they will. All right, any other questions?
Yes, I have one.
Okay, Sarah?
Sorry, so if you have a teacher that goes and just help the slow girl with this, please. If you have a teacher that goes and does one half of a period and then jumps over to another. Is that going to be covered in the way you just said the motion? Are they gonna get paid for two? Or are they still gonna be, get paid for one period, one?
Or full periods.
I'm not trying to split hairs. I just wanted to be super clear because for processing for, you know, Gretchen and Jody.
Yeah, four full periods and any subsequent full periods per week at thirty-five dollars.
With a maximum of how many periods to be paid?
No, no. And, and rather than periods, you want to say prep periods to make it clear we're talking about prep periods? Or not, does it, well, no, I guess not. Okay.
Because if it's not a prep period.
They'd be teaching, yeah, they'd be teaching. All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Thank you. And, yeah. All right, student board member, Connor, again.
Hello. Once again, I have no, I was not presented with any formal proposals, so I don't have much to present again. But students seem to have enjoyed the break and. As in officers are getting ready for the fundraisers and stuff that they have coming up. Dances to plan, you know, the, the usual. Students getting ready for the upcoming midterms next week.
Yeah, does anyone have any questions? Does everybody have any questions for Connor? Um, I have something for you, Connor.
Yes.
NHSBA has a annual scholarship they started last year for student board members. And it's a two thousand dollar scholarship. They give five out, one for each area. So we're the southwest region. So, um, I can pass, and there's an email too. I printed this stuff off, but there's also an email I can pass along to John if, if you're interested. And if you're interested in applying for that or not, if you're just interested in looking at it, and I'll, I'll forward that, that email to John. And it does say one of the, the letters of recommendation you need is from a current board member that represents your district. So if you're interested in that. Let John know and, and I'll write you a, a letter from to cover that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Sean and Sarah, I think this was mostly you, the, and Joe, the H S local worker position.
Yeah, Sarah, do you want to speak to it or do you want me to speak to it?
Yeah, I mean, you two.
Gosh, do you mind?
I don't mind at all. So this was one of the job descriptions that was in. A group that we had way back over the summer time, right? It kept getting pulled out. And not put on the backboard, back burner, but. Kept being reviewed and reviewed and reviewed. So we reviewed it, you know, formally in personnel at the October, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Personnel committee meeting. And we went through it and we made some edits and then it was supposed to, and then because we were going to be canceling. Some upcoming personnel meetings, it was supposed to come to the board back in November. And Wayne didn't bring it, so then we missed it in December. It's just been hanging out there for so long that we just really need to get it done. So what you have. What you had in the board packet was kind of the. Somewhat edited version, but what you guys got tonight with the green and the yellow is the edited version. So there's, the yellow has revised language, then green is something we've crossed out, there's some strike throughs.
Green, green is what it should be now after all the discussions.
Green is struck through here.
So then, so then, yep, so green, so we took it out, so.
Right, so the only thing here, the question, so we landed on the one ninety-seven days to match the comparable position at the middle high school, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so one ninety-seven would actually be, should be a yellow highlight. So yellow would be indicating the new language and the strikers and the green would be stuff that's taken out. And then at one ninety-seven days.
Sorry if I.
No.
Color it wrong. Because everything else should have been green. That was what we wanted it to be moving forward.
No, the green is the stuff we want to kick it out.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Most recent iteration, sorry, better?
So basically it just struck through, no matter if it's colored or not, it's struck through, okay. Except the one ninety seven is.
Is it me or is this board meeting seem very uh?
Yeah.
It's a little, it is wonky, it's definitely wonky.
And I inherited, yeah, I inherited this from May, so I don't.
Yes.
I did the best I could with the quick conversations we've had and long discussions as well, so.
No, everything tonight's been confusing issues that we're trying to clean up, everything, so. Yeah.
Yeah, and this, and like Sarah said, you know, she she inherited this, but you know, we put it off too, not put it off, I don't want people saying put it off, but. We have kept having questions on it and um.
And then it got bumped for various reasons.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
That's been since, I think, June or whatever.
Yeah.
So is this like a first reading or?
Yeah, we only need first and second readings for policies.
So this hopefully is the.
Final.
This is it. So does anybody have any questions? Joe, do you have any input or questions? I don't know who who else, like Joe, I assume Joe was pulling in, so.
Personnel. And it initially came to Joe and then personnel.
Okay, that's right, Joe would have started it. Make a motion to accept the social worker uh H S job description as. Submitted. Submitted.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Uh, any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Thank you, Sean and Sarah and Julia, I know you are personnel.
In the committee, yes, thank you.
Thank you, everybody on personnel. All right, so next up, we have with group of. Policies for first reading, submit a motion to. Make motion to accept the group policies as a first reading. Can you hear a second? All right, any questions?
Uh, no, I have a strong objection to policy E C B. I think that it, um, that's the drone flight policy. I think that um it is.
Cornerous.
Yeah, and it's basically a a policy for the sake of having a policy.
Yeah.
Um, I think that a lot of stuff in the policy is covered under um this regular FAA regulations and those of us who do drone stuff. Are we do this? Do I think we should have permission from the superintendent to fly over um this, over the district? Absolutely, hundred percent. And um that's what I have done in the past. But I will tell you with some of the stuff in this policy, um even that video that we did uh coming back from COVID. To talk about. I would not have done it.
Yeah.
If I had to do all these things, I would not have done it, so I think that, I think. Our drone policy could basically be um, don't fly over su- over the district and law schools in session unless you have permission from the superintendent.
Yeah, I don't know anything about drones and I thought of that video we did.
Yep, it can be that simple, I would not have done it, and some of this stuff, I'm I'm not gonna show you my flight log. And my flight log is electronic, I don't, I don't keep one on air. You know, so I am very opposed to E C D.
Okay, any other comments, Joe?
Excuse me, I noticed in uh policy E B C D, which is emergency plans. On page one of three, down at the bottom in item B. Going to talk about the late opening, it talks about cancellation of morning kindergarten, which should be at this point in time. Right, preschool, because kindergarten involved it.
Yeah. Where is that?
What section?
Uh, the policy E B C D at the bottom of page one under section B, it's the third, start a third sentence up.
Immigrants all day.
Morning preschool.
Yes. Okay. So the drone policy, um, so if we want to basically, I mean, it's optional.
It is.
So we want to, basically, you're saying you're to scrap it and just say, don't fly over. Um, do we?
During the day without permission.
Yeah, like, let's, how do we proceed in this? Do I mean?
This drone policy come from, how did it? What was the um evolution of this policy?
The, when we have these policies, we're from the NHSBA sample policy, so they they come up with policies from, you know, they. Different people, I guess, school districts suggesting there's some things that are required, and they write this, so this is just a normal policy, things we get from them and review.
So it's an optional policy by the New Hampshire School Board Association and and I understand that, you know, Connecticut did the same thing. Are we having a problem with drones?
Are we, guys?
No, I think it's become more prevalent, like graduations.
Yeah.
You know, and then typically you get permission and I had. People ask me for permissions, uh we had home, not here, but homecoming, sporting events. And so sporting events I wouldn't allow because I didn't need a drone. You know, crashing on the vehicle during a game or something like that.
Just was even be flying them over people anyway, I mean.
Right, well, there's regulations and you and you have.
Correct, correct.
Right, so um.
And I found out. Yeah, yesterday. That uh we have a class that's gonna be doing some drone.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. In the, in the um, in the gym.
Right, they do that.
And uh that was a great class.
Yeah.
And uh. You know, so I I'm in favor of keeping it simple. Um, you know, we we review of policies that are optional. And if we're having a particular issue, we want to look at that policy and potentially, you know, um, you know. Talk about uh adding that to our our list of policies, but. I like to keep it, keep it simple.
So right now, what we're saying, if if we're hearing it right, is we, like, people get permission enough, but we don't have anything. A policy right now about drone. And we don't have to have. So we, no, so we just kind of have a practice that people would ask permissions and.
I've always, I always want to be the superintendent.
Yeah, I mean, but nothing's in writing right now and we don't necessarily need it. Uh, we might want to, we might want to put something in writing at some point, like, I mean, we could. Put a different policy that's very short.
We don't have to use this language.
No, no, I mean, we 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 could call it the same. E C D, and maybe if some, somebody could bring us next month. Amended, like drastically amended. Yeah, and talk to Kim and.
Or also, you you could include that in in board motion. And not even.
Oh, that's, that way it would be in writing and it would be, that's really good idea.
Addressed it, and uh this is how we would like to handle it, um, it's not a policy. You know, but it's uh being a good neighbor and uh. You know, um. You know, I I never even thought about drone policy.
Well, since it's a first reading anyway.
Right.
We can make that decision next month, and Sean has a policy that might work.
Or a motion.
Or a motion. Yeah. All right, so that makes sense, Maria, we we. Well, we'll vote on these as a first reading and then next month we'll pull out the drone question and deal with how we're going to deal with it.
Is that okay, guys?
Makes sense.
John and.
Oh, yeah.
And Joe?
Okay.
All right, so we had a motion a second. Um, no more, no further discussion, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next up, other business, Julia, do you have anything?
No, I'm gonna address it when.
Okay, uh, April?
I don't have any.
I've caused enough trouble.
I have a few things. So um, so the meeting, the day of our meeting for the rest of the year, um, so. Um, I know, uh, you know, we kind of talked a little way, but we had thought, you know, we, obviously, we, Kim gets here to decide on our February and going forward meeting, so. Um, if Kim, if you could just, you know, could talk about that.
Board meetings?
Yes, I'm sorry, board meetings, yes, because our, those are, normal is the second Wednesday, which I know you have a another.
First of all, thank you very much uh for the flexibility. Um, I know your your board meetings, they conflicted with a another board that I'm required to be at. So, um, you know. Thursday was was great, um, but it it makes more sense perhaps to hold it, you know, on a on a Wednesday when. It's uh kind of in the routine of the organization. And just uh, you know, looking at like the first Wednesday of the month or. Or something like that, the uh, let me check my cell phone. For my calendar. Because I have another meeting. On. A meeting in Sullivan on the set every second Wednesday of the month, so we could get the first Wednesday, the third Wednesday. You know.
What's best for for you guys?
Only do the first.
The first.
I can't do the third, I have another meeting.
Okay. Are you good on the first, Sean? For the next two?
I bet you're gone.
Next two counts.
It looks like I am.
Okay, I will take that.
It looks like I've gotten free.
Okay, April?
Yeah, it looks like I'm the next two.
Yeah, it's gonna be the next. Well, no, 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 not the next two for him.
Oh, sorry.
Done.
Oh, that's right, sorry. Yeah, no, I'm looking good.
Okay, and I'm good with that. So uh, we would say February first. I'm telling you what. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, guys, I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm so quorum focused right now.
Right.
So I forgot about anybody else. Are you guys good uh with the first Wednesday, John? Are you good?
Yeah, whatever works.
So, Justin. Uh, Chris and Chris?
Are you there, Snow?
Yeah, I'm I'm still here, I was just trying to get to the unmute button.
So the first.
You said the first Wednesday?
Yeah.
Um, I I would have to check, but I think that sounds okay, yes.
Okay. Sarah?
I'm pretty sure it is, I, but don't hold up on me.
Okay. All right, cool, thank you, so February first. Will be our next board meeting and then the first Wednesday.
We didn't have anything scheduled for the fourteenth, did we?
That was a, that was a tentative that we were gonna, if we were gonna do it on a Tuesday.
Oh.
You can get rid of that. Yeah, yeah, we just tentative wanted to put that on there in case, you know. February.
Yeah.
Valentine's Day.
Yeah, we have a meeting.
We have a meeting?
No, no, no.
No.
Postal people have.
I haven't checked my emails all day because I've been working.
Oh, yeah, well, let me ask Maria, is the first Wednesday good for you?
I think, yeah, I think so.
Okay, yeah, and then if you, yeah, there's a good point, April.
So has usually means before the school board meeting?
Yeah.
Can you let? Mary, I know, and then the then they'll figure. Then we'll figure out is a group that we still want to keep it that way?
Okay, yeah, I'll. All right, great, thank you, and we'll put some on community connections too, like going forward for the rest of the school year, well. Um, the other thing I had um was at our budget work session um. On this past Tuesday, the question came up about um. Reaching out to Winchester and seeing about their agreement with Keen and um talk, you know, starting a conversation with them about. Tuitioning students here, um I had. Had reached out, I'm friends with their board chair and got a little bit of information, but Jody, uh I saw Jody, um and Kim, and if. If we would like them to do that, um, you know, to reach out to them, we would just, you know, give them. Authorization tonight to reach out to their super or their V A or whoever's appropriate there, to get the official kind of.
Oh, the official um answer.
Yeah, I mean, it's official enough, they're bored, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, do we, I think we need a motion, you probably need a motion.
Yeah, I think so, it would be uh, you know. More solid than than what's yet.
Yeah. All right, so somebody like to make that motion? For Jody and Kim to reach out to the appropriate people in Winchester.
I make a motion to the board to give him and Jody permission to reach out to Winchester about their contracts with Keen.
Yes. They're, they're tuition, they're tuition contract, yeah, whatever they call it, yeah. All right. All those, are any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, great. Uh, next thing I had was I just wanted to thank John and Joe for making time for Kim and I to go around uh yesterday, and thank you to Kathy Bean, who. Showed uh Kim and I around at the elementary school, and we, I think we had a, we didn't pop into every room, but we popped into several and saw a ton of people in the hallways. Um, I don't know if you wanted to say anything else like that, but I thought it was great. Kim was amazing, Kim was engaging with students and they were so receptive and it was just such a positive vibe.
Yeah. Don't share my thunder.
But my, I I'm just saying thank you, I'm giving you my thank you, sorry, Kim. Um, the other thing about that. I know, I'm sorry about that. Um, we got the filing notice and um I I don't think I have it on my phone, but we all got a copy of it, Maria sent it to us uh for um the. Sign up period to run for the board, we have two seats and um. I think it's a two-year moderator, right, Mike Fielden.
Mike's doing this year.
This year, yeah, and a two-year moderator seat, and I don't remember the dates off the top of my head, but we'll post it on community connections and. It's somewhere near the end of the month until like the very beginning of February. Yeah, it's the last week, and then Friday, you can only, that's the only business, they'll do it, town clerk will do it, the sign up, they they won't, yeah. All right, so so I had for that, um. So financial report.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, let me first apologize for my lack of a narrative, but my narrative would have been budget, budget, budget. Um, but you, other than that, you have my report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Jody? Um, I have one thing, um, and I don't know if this. We do this under this or maybe budget committee here, but um Ken had suggested um to the thirty six thousand for the HVAC. That if if we would consider taking it out of the maintenance trust, and we just said we would have to talk about it at our meeting, so um.
I'm just gonna do that on the budget.
Okay, do you want me to wait for that minute budget? Okay, I'm sure because I'm thinking Jody.
Budget.
So, okay. All right, I'll move it to under budget, all right, awesome, no questions, Jody. Just remind me, um, all right, Karen?
Um, thanks for, Madam Chair, you have my report, I didn't add into this, I would just like to, um, what we talked about, I wrote about the um Esther Use Funds template that we had to get completed. And I just want to give a shout out to Justin, who really saved the day, we had to convert it to a P V F. And it is a huge document. And um it was, he saved me yesterday afternoon, so thank you to Justin for his technical abilities that I don't have. And um, uh, so we were uploaded and it's, and it was, we got a, not approved yet, but it was accepted and we'll see what happens.
Justin saves the day quite. Saves the day. Any questions for Karen? All right, great, thank you. Um. And, yeah, I was just gonna say.
Madam Chair, you have my report, uh, one thing. Uh, before any questions, I just want to point out that the. There is a trial version of the website that we talked about in our communication team. I just want to pass along to the board to just play with, play with our mobile devices, tablets, whatever. One of the things we identified is that it didn't. The current layout hasn't been updated in many years. Um, and it's not too mobile friendly, I was just hoping that. More of a, um. An actual function. Feedback instead of the design, design could still use more right now, but it's more just how navigation works on.
All right, I looked at both and they both looked the same, but I all looked at it at the desktop.
When did you look at it? Because I realized I forgot to copy over. And make public the the new layout, so sometime around like Sunday, I think. It's been my report last week and I, I was working the.
I think it was Saturday, I think it was Saturday.
I'd be willing to quickly demo it if that's.
I mean, that's all, I'll look at it.
Okay.
I looked at it on my phone Monday and was able to like, um, actually, because like on the old time version. When I went to the website and tried to click the little three lines to get the thing, you couldn't see.
Right.
Yeah, so it was nice, it was nice to be able to see the links I could do, you know, I I clicked school board to see if it, it didn't go anywhere, I assumed that just because it's not ready.
Yeah.
Um, but I did click into a couple of things and it did go where it needed to go and I got information, so I was, that was, that part of it was super helpful.
Awesome. And I included like the the district's uh phone number at the top, each school's website, if it's, if we move forward with this design, we'll have the phone number, you click it, it pulls up the dialer on your phone automatically. It's quick and easy.
Yeah.
Help this school. There was one question brought up for some, from someone that also viewed it. Which logo do we go with? Cause right now I'm using the one that's on, that's roughly on the T-shirt behind you, but, uh. We also have the Pacer, we have.
Aye, that's true.
Whatever, and who has the permission to decide that? I'm, I'm fine making the decision, but.
That's another discussion.
Great question.
I don't know, what do you guys think?
Our meetings aren't always like.
You, and they were, you know, much. Uh, what do you guys think?
Thanks, sir.
Hey, sir, hey, sir. Well.
We have confused branding.
Well, there's a district, right? There's a district, an elementary and a middle high.
Well, it used to always be the Pacer, even, even though you guys were the folks, I think, but. Yeah, and then it changed, it changed a few years ago, it just changed to, to the, the old one, so.
Just for the rough draft, I use that, that one, cause we use that as our, as our actual letterhead, so.
That chance for letterhead then to the Pacer?
Yes.
So are we make a, a decision, the Pacer?
Yes.
We're starting off new, the Pacer, is that what you're saying? Take care.
Well, I just looked at our letterhead, we don't even put on the basis, we have the picture of the school, you know, so.
Right, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, so don't take that off. If you have a picture of the school, don't take that off, but if you. Okay, cool, thank you, thank you, Justin, for all that work.
And bringing so much to the.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, awesome.
And for making sure that our neighbors' cell phones don't get.
Hundred percent. No, no, definitely. And when I met with Jason, just today, just because it always sticks in my mind, when they went to Minneapolis. In the summer and they had to get, be here down here for like, what, two in the morning? Ticket to get the bus to go to the airport, and he was here to make sure all, everybody's laptops were set and they had no, at two in the morning.
Yep.
So, yeah. So, yeah. Dedicated, all right. All right, thank you. All right, uh, human resources, Sarah.
I too would like to thank Justin for saving me earlier this week, when I was, um, completely locked out of the payroll system. With the times, actually a couple of times sensitive pieces that had to get out ASAP, so thank you, Justin. And so, Madam Chair, you have my report, and if there's anything I can answer, I will do my best.
Thank you. Any questions for Sarah? Thank you so much, or do you have a question?
I just, I was looking at the current positions being posted and recruited for. It looks like a lot, number one, but.
It does feel like a lot, yes.
Uh, are there, is it? I'm guessing more than one parent educator. Probably like six.
No, I think we're pretty good.
Think it's like two or three.
Okay. Great, thank you.
At least that's what I thought we left as from December when we. Maybe lost a person, filled a person, and then. I, I know there's budget work going on with, you know, Jody and the team around what we're budgeted for. And then the staffing needs around, you know, the population coming in or, or, um, I'm not gonna say this right, um. Like designations or, or when. Yes, so I think that changes the need, which I think mixes with then the number, which then sounds funky for budget and then. It's a fluid.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Great.
Yep.
Any other questions for Sarah? All right, thanks. All right, principals reports, yeah?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh. Before I get lost in this, um. Uh, we, I do expect a donation of greater than five hundred dollars from LNO Automotive. To go towards our coat drive for my students' coat and other winter type materials. So given that it's probably gonna be over five hundred dollars, I wanted to make sure the board. Gonna accept that, and then you have my report for any other things to consider, question.
So do we have to, ha- wait, than you expected? Do we have to wait till they make the donation and? It's happened frequently. And it, cause usually I think something's in writing, right, whether we vote on it when it comes. Yeah, the amount notes, yeah.
It's awkward to, to have a, is that a company?
Yeah, it's an automotive place.
You know, wanna make a donation, I mean, it's very nice, um, and wonderful. You know, it seems like if we know it's coming, we should make a motion that we're going to accept it. And, um, move on from there and then say, thank you very much, you're a nice letter from the board, I mean.
So we don't, we could say in, in excess of five, expected donation in excess of five hundred and.
Yeah, and we can specify for the annual post drive, they do it every year, so I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
How many zeros are there gonna be in that donation?
I'll be two.
Okay. That, that's very nice, very, very nice.
Did you get that, Sean? No, that's okay.
Is it L and?
L and L and.
Yeah, with an ampersand. Yeah, yeah. All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Post? Okay, and then any other questions for Joe's report? Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome, thank you.
Um, and John's been in the hot seat all day.
Um, so you, you have my report, um. I, I tell you, uh, was that, was that last Friday now? Yeah, last Friday was a great way to end the first week with the unified basketball game, um. Uh, Mr. Karen was there and got to see, so we had the entire student body there. I mean, I've seen unified basketball games and it's really cool, but that, be able to invite the entire student body, uh. The student body was great, the kids loved it, they were pumped. They, and they, they won the game, which was extremely excited, then they lost to Keen then on Monday, so then they were down. But I was like, that's okay, you guys played great, um, but it was so. Again, i- it was great to see how, you know, kids had signs of, 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 of our players. And, uh, they, they were just all excited and so intense and, and wanting to play and play hard. And, uh, it was, it was, it was awesome, and they are always awesome games, um. We'll be going to Fallmount and Fallmount's does the same thing, they have an assembly, um. And I don't know when that game is, but, uh, so that's going on, that's the big thing. Um, we talked about discipline and then we have the midterm schedule, um. And I talked about this with the staff, because I wasn't a big proponent of it, because I, I questioned. The value of, of doing three quarters of a day, let's say, um. And, and we switched it up, because my understanding was middle school students had to go through these ninety-minute exams. And for a sixth grader to have, to even understand the implications of a midterm and what that means. So that the middle school, we're gonna do our math testing, perfect time to do that, um. The geography spelling bee is gonna be, not geography spelling, spelling bee is gonna be, uh, on the twenty-fifth of the morning. And that'll be a middle school, school-wide, um, event, and, uh. If we do the, and then they'll still have their regular classes, and the reason is why we're dismissing. The middle school students with the high school at that time, is we don't want to have to pay for an additional bus room. You know, because otherwise then they'd have to come back again, uh, bus company's on board, uh, kitchen staff is on board. And then I'm gonna evaluate and see the value of it, uh, and, uh. And again, I asked for a teacher input, originally, nobody said a thing, so I said, well, here's what I'm gonna do, we're not gonna do it. Then I got input, but, but that's what I, I want, I want their input, so, um. That's where we're at right now, and, you know, the extraordinary needs grant is completed. And we'll begin reviewing that data, they had questions on January tenth PLC about performance assessments. And where are we at with that? And they provided me feedback with that.
Okay, any questions?
Actually, it's a, it's a, it's a comment in support of you, because I am obviously the big advocate, opponent of changing the cell policy. I heard you say when we first started about that, that you have your, and I respect you kept your opinion, what you felt was right to yourself, thank you for that. I would have welcomed your opinion as well, but what you said loud and clear that resonates with me is that you don't want this message to come from you. You want this message to be a board, like the board should communicate that this is their decision to change this policy.
Oh, no, I will not, not, not say that's a board, it'll be my decision.
Okay, cause I heard you say you didn't want it, you wanted. Decision so that you weren't, you weren't in the hot seat for making that change.
I, I apologize, that was not my interpretation. What I wanted, I think I did say, I, for you guys to change the policy. Saying that we're going back to it.
Okay, I was just gonna offer support in communicating that as a board decision, if that is, was better for you.
No, oh, no, 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 I mean, I have no problem saying, based on the information and everything I've had and to review this. That this is what we're gonna do.
Okay, perfect, I was just trying to be supportive.
It will, it will come back to you at some point.
Yeah, because, because we approved it, they'll say approved in the date, so it'll come back to us.
No, but I mean, just in general, I mean, you know, we, this is a. This is all of us.
Yeah.
Creatives, I just didn't want to give you what. I didn't wanna be the one to make changes to a policy, right? So, and I know I may not still be saying that clearly.
We wanted communications to be board driven.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'll just add one thing about the unified game, I just, again, we talk about behaviors a lot, but on that day in that room. Um, the entire student body, like there was no behaviors happening that day. Oh, one. But, I, I mean, one, and I just, it's, it's the kind of culture that. That we'd like to encourage, right? Like that kind of stuff. I wish, I hope we can do more of those things, because to see the entire student body and the kids. Cheering on our unified teams, and it was just, it was really nice to see, and we hadn't. We don't see that a lot, right? Especially we're hearing all this stuff that's going on, but then all of a sudden these kids just came together. And I wasn't sure, like, how was it gonna be with some of these behaviors or whatnot, there was just the kids were cheering and laughing and having a great time, so. It, it's easy to get caught, I think I said this last night too, but I just think, giving students that opportunity to come together and to. Give them a reason to be proud of something, just really, I, I saw that happen that day in the culture in that room and the beyond that gym was just really nice, so.
Great. Awesome, thank you.
And they were cheering both teams.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, superintendent's report.
Uh, well, so, uh, so far, so good, um. First of all, I, I wanna thank the board for, um, inviting me to be your interim superintendent. And, uh, you know, fill this role that you, that you need, um, in talking with the Rambler reformer. Um, about being here, uh, he said, you don't wanna just be a placeholder, I think that's true. Um, you know, what my goal is, is to, you know, help us continue to move forward. And, you know, while I'm observing, visiting classrooms, attending board meetings, attending committee meetings. You know, doing my office functions is to be able to provide, um. The permanent superintendent, once you identify who that is. But, uh, when that permanent superintendent starts to be able to provide that guy or girl with a framework. You know, uh, this is how I think you should move the, you should help to move the district forward. And, uh, you know, I, I've done that in the past, uh, for districts and, and, uh, we align it with the mission. Uh, the goals, the objectives of, of the district, uh, which you have, you have those in place. Um, but be able to provide that information to a new superintendent, uh, and help, help the district move forward. I've spent a lot of time, um, in the schools and got into some classrooms, um, you know. Looking at the cafeteria, you know, being kind of all over the place. Um, and, uh, you know, I've done that for a reason. Number one, I think visibility is important, um, for, for a leader. And, uh, number two, I have a hard time, uh, sitting in my office for more than an hour or two. You know, so it's kind of selfish as well, but I, I, I've enjoyed getting out, I've enjoyed meeting. Uh, the teachers that I've met so far and, and the staff that I've met so far, the administrators. Um, you're starting to get to know them, um, you know, and, and like them. Uh, and, uh, I, I think we're beginning to develop a, you know, sort of a team approach, uh, to this, I, I hope so. And, um, you know, it, all in all, it's been good, uh, it's been great, in fact. Interesting. You know, a- as a, you know, as seasoned administrators who have been around for a while, Joe, and I'm looking at you. You kind of, you kind of get a sense of, of the building almost immediately. You know, when, when you step into a building, you can, you can kind of feel that culture. Um, I, I've been in schools where I walk in and say, ooh, there's a lot of tension here. Um, there's something going on here, but I tell you, I, I've walked into the middle high school, into the elementary school, you don't get that feeling. I've been in the hallways during passing times, you got great kids. You know, I, I know that education in schools are a challenge, you know, and they, they always have been. And they always will be, you know, you're dealing with human beings who are growing and developing. You know, and trying to figure out their, their way through life, and it's our job to try to, try to help them with that. With that task, you know, with that responsibility, um, discipline's a part of it. Um, you know, and also using discipline as, you know, an educational tool, you know, to help them move forward. Um, you know, I believe in that, that, that firmly, um, but all in all, I mean, I think there are. This great stuff going on here. I've been in some classrooms where I've seen some, some super stuff. Um, you know, the kids have been friendly, they seem to. Like me being around, you know, which is nice, you know, I get the fist bumps now and then. So it's been, it's, it's been, been nice being around here and, and, you know, being in all of the schools and, and seeing what's going on. You know, so, yeah, I, I feel, feel good about, about where we are. And, um, I get the sense, you know, I'm developing a, a list of, a list of tasks. That, that we need to be done, that are more urgent, um, and also developing that, uh, you know, that framework of understanding. Of, uh, how we move, move forward as a district, you know. To me, you know, y- your vision talks about personalized learning. And you can make it happen here. You've got all the building blocks in place, you know, where, where that can truly happen. And, and, you know, I believe that that is, is the, what we should be doing. Um, you know, personalizing learning for, for each individual student, and, you know. You've got the structure here to do that, um, you know, I, I think you have the, the staff here, you know, to make it happen. I think I'd like to see, you know, um. Some teacher leadership teams and, and, um, you know, ways to communicate, you know, with, from, from this building. From the SAU building, you know, in the schools as well, you know, I'm, I'm thinking. That one of the things is, this is not ready for primetime, but, but, um, I'm thinking of, uh. Doing like a monthly fifteen minutes, you know, with the, with the faculty and staff, um, saying, this is how we're doing. Do you have any questions? You know, where, how, how do you think we're doing? Um, and get feedback, you know, from them and develop more of a. Do you have any questions? You know, where, how how do you think we're doing? Um, and get feedback, you know, from them and develop more of a. Uh, two-way communication. Um, you know, that will help us move forward as well, so. Um. I'm I'm enthusiastic about what can be done. Uh, I'm I'm not um. Blind to the particular challenges that we have. Um, I I know that that, that's part of it. Uh, but I think we have a a good team here to make it happen. Uh, so. That's my report and um, I'm sticking to it at this point, so. Are there any, any questions or concerns?
Yep, any questions or comments?
I have one. Um, so we're talking about the uh, the SRO and I don't know what, you know, what, i- if we have options, what our options are, but. Uh, we have, you know, two people listed here as the uh SRO, uh, you know, switching off duties. And I just, I feel like over the years, you've had good success with like having one main person. So will it, is it gonna be a one main person and a fill-in or is it like?
It sounds like it's gonna be a shared thing to me and and it was uh, actually. Uh, uh, Joe and I met the, the SROs. You you know the gentleman's name.
Yeah, Detective Carrier will be in on Monday. And Officer Upton, Officer Upton will be on two other unconfirmed days. Uh. So we will have presence here and and what they indicated was that had. Although we won't have the presence throughout the day, on the other days when they're not present, there will be somebody here. Um, for drop-off and arrival times until somebody gets trained.
Now, I don't consider that schedule or that coverage anywhere close to ideal.
Well, I was gonna say, how does it compare to what we've had in the past?
Well, we had Officer Gallagher here four days a week. He was never here on uh Fridays. He was here Monday through Thursday. Yeah, he would stay on campus unless he's called out to an emergency.
And Marcelo, can we remember far enough back to Marcelo?
Five days a week and again, unless called out to a uh, an emergency situation in town.
I mean, it was a, I had it on my, my list of things to do. It was to contact the. The police chief and, you know, see where we were with this SRO and and um, this uh. Row and MOU and ABC. And uh, but, you know, I was out visiting the schools and and there they were. Um, so I thanked him. Um, and uh, have in the back of my head to kind of revisit that, that MOU and um. Meet with the chief, you know, when I, when I, you know, when, when it's appropriate. And um, you know, talk about trying to get, get as much visibility from the police department here as possible. Um, you know, that's always a good thing. I've worked in districts where where. We had SROs or or campus safety staff and um, having that visibility is is critical. Um, so um. I have that in the back of my head.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, my preference is obviously to have the the one main person, right? Cuz you get the relationships. You know, more so than splitting a lot. Obviously, sometimes if that person can't be there, you got, go away or whatever. Um, so now we're dealing with three days versus four days. Are we paying less?
I haven't looked into the financial piece yet.
Well, we haven't gotten invoice yet. We get it last year, last year, if you recall, we got two years worth. And we didn't get any detail for it. We're not gonna pay an invoice going forward unless we have the detail. Which we used to get when Marcelo was here.
Yep.
Um. So, that's why I'm, I'm, it's, I think it's, yeah, it's a separate conversation, but I am trying to keep track of things.
And I wanna say, cuz I had a uh, MOU written down on here too. I I do have the MOU.
I remember, I I, originally it came over from DC cuz we had that grant funded.
Yeah, I got it from Jody last year when we had the issue of getting two years' worth of an invoice. Um, so she and I, periodically I've been talking about when, you know, and just things were coming up at the end of this, last year, we were saying, okay, we need to talk about this and. And now this have, you know, have a where they they came with their plan, which, you know, it doesn't follow the MOU, but. Uh, you've gotta be flexible, like. Yeah, so we were talking about, um, we were gonna talking originally, put it like on this month's agenda, but you know, with budget and everything. So when Jody has time. And and Kim and Jody can look at it together, have time, put it, you know, on an agenda after they've had time to to had to look it over and because it's from like twenty fourteen. And everyone is who signed it is gone except for me. So, it's that, it's that old. So and and at different points, like she even said, uh. Uh, um, Chief Gallagher was four days when, you know, you said five, and then now we're down to three. So, yes, we've just been kind of flexible all along, but, yeah.
I just wanna make sure that if we are, that we're not paying.
I understand that that the, the police department is having similar staffing challenges that that we're experiencing.
Chief's doing a really great job, you know, bringing people on, but you know, he has his. He has his challenges too, when there's, you know, challenges in the world of law enforcement, same way as there is in. Oh, yeah, and expensive. So Chief does a really good job.
I wanna approach that with, you know, understanding.
Yep.
Um, and uh, I also, you know, believe very strongly, this should be a, a uh. A safe and productive learning environment, you know, good, good place for teaching and learning. Uh, so. Uh, my, I I know that my ultimate task is to uh. Do that to the best of my ability and that's what I've been doing.
Great.
Any other questions for Kim? All right, thank you. All right, committee reports, personnel.
Uh, we have a meeting on the twentieth.
No, when is it? I, in the day of the meeting.
Uh, yeah, it's probably the twentieth, that one, I think it is.
Yeah, that's, I, I just.
I can do that one.
No, my God, you know, you're a wonderful board member.
We can make sure, we can try to have a Zoom too, if by, if by chance, you're free, right?
All right, perfect.
Only, you know.
All right, thank you, guys. Uh, health and wellness?
No meetings yet.
Uh, finance budget, so is this where we wanna talk about the thirty six thousand? I think my, my brain just was thinking Jody. All right, so yes, so I don't think um, we need to talk too much about it, Julia. We can fill you in later about last, the other meeting the other day, or if you can talk about it now if you want. So like, as we said though, one of the things we need to take action on that came out of it, and it was a good suggestion. Um, was to, for the thirty six thousand to um, replace whatever, how many, whatever's the H V C backs. I don't understand any of it. Facilities is the only committee I've never been on, so I, and I don't care to be. So, um, yes, so the, to take that out of the um. Reserve, the maintenance reserve.
And I'm in favor of doing that, but I also wanna look at, cuz we apparently got, I I've only ever really known of the the two expendable trusts, and we have that third one. Um, you know, the one that we haven't done anything with in forever. I mean, I am absolutely in favor of taking the H V C back out of the um. School building maintenance expendable trust, but I would also um, like to kind of close out that other one and move it into the expenditure.
Just, did you mention that to me or was that talked about?
And I've got a call into the DRA. Uh, so last week, Jamie Dow was our advisor. And when I tried, when I opened up the DRA website, we have a new advisor, so I think maybe Jamie um retired in the last couple of days.
It's no longer in that position.
Well, no, because she had talked about retiring, so I I think that she did. Um, but, but it it's news to me and I might find out more Friday, but. I've got a call into the, to our new advisor and I haven't heard back. I'll try again tomorrow, but wanna, I wanna ask about. If she has the copy of that older warrant article, because I've not been able to to get my hands on it. To see how it's worded, right? Um, but I have read the wording of the other one and it looks to me like we can. We can take the money out, um, but I wanna double check it with the DRA, so.
And we usually do that like in June, tip, right, cuz what, uh. Other times we've done that and taken it out, it's after district meeting.
The last time we did it was after district meeting.
Yeah, and it's usually in the spring, if I remember correctly, maybe not June, maybe May, but it's always been after district meeting.
Well, we can take that out of the proposed budget.
Yeah, right, right. As long as, as long as you guys decide that's what you wanna do, that's, I'll be happy to do that. I do wanna just. Throw one thing in that Sean's telling me that the lead time for the HVAC systems could be over thirty four weeks. So.
Some of my biggest projects are school projects, the one I just, the million dollar school in Connecticut.
Yeah.
The uh, we're supposed to move in over Christmas and there's a crane putting the HVAC system up this week, so. Uh, that's a real problem.
Right.
Uh, anything with elevators, anything with technology, HVAC.
Yeah, we had elevator issues too.
You have to pay it, like, what do you mean, take the money out?
I was gonna say, Nate, so maybe we do that.
So I just think we need to have it worded carefully because it may be something that, you know, we're ordering in. One fiscal year and potentially paying for another fiscal year, that's.
Well, you decumber it.
Right.
You decumber it.
I just wanna make sure though that.
Cuz I mean, cuz we can take out it, cuz we can take out of that fund whenever we want. We just have to have the hearing, take it out whenever we want. Now, when we talk about closing out the other one, then moving that, and that has to be obviously district meeting and stuff.
I think, I think that might be a warrant article, but I'm not sure. Yeah, okay.
Since you had a warrant article to open it, so you have to have a warrant article to close it. And then you probably have to take that money and do a warrant article.
If, if thirty four weeks is the lead time, we need to, we need to act on that, get it ordered, right?
Yeah, it's fluctuating, but as Sean's probably looked into it with the company that he's investigating, the product he wants to buy.
Yes.
So we could make the motion tonight, have the public hearing, like we usually have public hearings for this type of thing. Uh, right before a board meeting, like notice a public hearing at six o'clock. And then after, you know, after close public hearing, then go in, notice, you know, board meeting, so we couldn't even do that in February, if that's what you're thinking. Yeah, that makes sense.
And I'm, I'm still trying to talk to Sean because he has come up with a second idea of just doing one of the HVA systems in the. Middle high school, and then instead of putting a new HVAC in the elementary school, he's talking about putting dampers in. Which would help control the humidity problem, which I can understand is a real problem. So. I don't, I don't know if that changes the amount of money. I need to get him to to.
So, so we have this, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but we have facilities on the twentieth as well. Can you have that ready for the twentieth?
Yep, it's on my list of things, asking if you want on the agenda.
So, uh, yes, I'd like that on the agenda.
Yeah, and so we can make the motion in February and have the hearing in.
March.
March, yeah.
I have a quick question and I'm sure the answer is, why have we, I assume they've investigated using extra funds for HVAC? I mean, why, that that falls right into the bellywhack of what we're trying to improve our environment, the health of our, of our circulation.
See, I maybe stupidly assumed that we had looked at that, but if we happened, then. Okay, so, maybe.
No, there were other reasons.
I've just, it's just.
We've been talking a lot about rewriting S R N C here.
Will we write in March again? We'll do the rewrite again. So what I'm doing now is looking at um. What is left, which isn't a lot, but we also have a signed sum that isn't going to be used.
Right.
So I don't know how much that is, but I think that we have a, some chunks of, particularly for positions that weren't able to be filled. Um, and I have some thoughts on, yeah, I think that we can do that. So. That would be something that the administrative team can have a discussion about when we do the rewrite. We just submitted, so we'll do it again in March, but um.
But if, but that.
We're gonna cover the money till next year if we end up having to spend it, so.
So, so let's, let's see what Sean's plan is. Let's see if we can do the HVAC, HVAC with S R funds. Either way, we do wanna close out the other one and move it into the maintenance expendable trust. So we've got those three deficits. Yes.
And you guys would find out the amount that they want at facilities.
Since you're writing the agenda, you got all that.
Yeah, I was gonna, setting my agenda list anyhow, um.
Well, I wouldn't have had this on it, but now I do.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
That is also on the twentieth?
Yes. Again, I can do that.
So we have a tentative meeting with the budget committee on the.
I don't think it's tentative now, right?
And that's fine, cuz then I could tell them that this is what we're looking to do when.
The next day.
But at that meeting, can we have a new number? With all of this stuff?
Cuz either way, either way, either way, we won't have that HVAC in the budget.
We've talked about at other work, work sessions where we're saving money here, we're saving money there. I need a new bottom line.
You will get six point O, I can.
And and if you get that meeting, Sean, we'll have to chair it cuz I'll be in Georgia, so. The last one was Tuesday.
The budget meeting is.
Thursday.
Thursday, the nineteenth. So I can, I can give you the new budget on Tuesday.
I'm very happy.
So here's another question, just to muck up the works a little bit, cuz they were talking about, you know, what can we do for other warrant articles, right? Um, and. We already do the CBAs as well, articles. And I uh, obviously am not gonna be a favorite of putting the HVAC or boilers or anything else on a warrant article cuz.
Cuz we looked into that.
Into it and, you know, correct it, no is no.
No means no.
No is no. You know, a while back, a couple of years ago, and I've since shared it with Holly, you know, I look back at some of our past warrant articles, what we've had in the past and like, um. There were things like, when we want to replace those uh, the chairs at district meeting, you know, and those were on a warrant article. So what are people's thoughts about, we have some money for um furniture. In various parts, you know, like the the room swap outs for desks and chairs. We also have some teacher requests for chairs and maybe desks. What about furniture on a warrant article?
You know, the the cycle of the room swap out. Uh, does that come out to, like, I don't know.
I don't know how much it comes out.
Yeah, I don't know what's like worth a warrant, you know what I mean, like a five thousand dollar warrant, but.
I know that, I mean, the teacher request is like six hundred bucks.
It's like, that's what, that's what I'm saying, if you put it all together as furniture, but it also satisfies, potentially satisfies their request.
That's what they say, no is no.
Yeah, but then if they say, no, that five hundred dollar chair, we really need to go order for somebody's ergonomics for their. Then 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 we, you know what I mean?
And again, I'm just throwing it out there and I don't know, and I don't know what the, what the monies are on it, you know, but. But, but obviously, we're not putting programming on a warrant article, ever. You know, and the, well, the positions are in the CBAs, right? That's, so they are on a warrant. But we can't. Right, no, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm pretending you're that. Um, now just trying to find stuff that we could, not just.
So what if we?
Oh, they could.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So if we were to do that, what if we limited the warrant article to the replacement cycle? And I think that's valid, in my opinion, because we're, we're letting the voters know that our intention is to. Replace furniture, uh, uh, have a cycle.
And that's similar to the cruisers with the replacement cycle thing, so.
And I know that you don't know the number up top of your head, but why is fifteen thousand dollars ticking in my head?
For furniture?
He was gonna do, he's gonna do two rooms of desks.
Cuz normally, isn't it seven?
Yeah, it's.
So I think it's like fifteen.
Two rooms of desks and chairs, so it might, it might be fifteen, I don't.
For some reason, that number.
People talk to your friendly furniture commercial.
Yeah. We would love that.
Can I just suggest or bring up an idea?
Sure.
So the one thing that's added to my budget after I'd already figured out my thing, but it's decided facilities.
Yeah.
There's a substantial amount, which cameras and interior of the middle high school, at twenty three thousand dollars. Do we want to do something like that, or have we decided? You know, you know, a board, created a, uh, committee already, do we just keep it? Uh, it's a pretty good chunk of change that wasn't really.
Twenty, twenty three, twenty three grand.
Yeah, like twenty three thousand.
And if, but if it gets, you know, now we can't do it at all.
For this year.
Yeah, for this year, yeah, yeah, for this year, yeah.
I, I, I don't know, we're just trying to talk about save money, it wasn't something that I had on my radar until. This summer, and then, you know, then we just, after then get approved in the safety grant, we moved it over into the normal budget.
Right.
So I, I'm fine either way, it's just.
That was good.
I mean, that would be nice, actually, yeah.
This is, this is another, you know, Justin said that he's gonna beat him down.
Justin, thank you so much. In this laundry I was experiencing on how to talk when. Warrant, but once again, save the day.
For a guy who's quiet by nature, right, he's getting way too much attention. Um, yeah, so do you want to think about that too?
But what do you, what do you, what did you guys think about, like, if it's because it's turned down, I mean, uh, you know, just to get everyone.
Can we live without it for a year? No means no.
I mean, that's more up to John and Chris, I'm fine carrying it if we want to carry it.
Internal cameras.
Right. And external upgrades as well, and the server that went along with it, the whole package is like twenty three thousand dollars.
I totally disagree with it. It's, you know. I mean, if you think it's, if you, if you're, if you're adamant, you'd be adamant. Well, I I I'm adamant, because, you know, we we we've got discipline issues that we probably could have addressed a lot quicker. With having cameras, you know, bathing in bathrooms, those kinds of things. Um. I, I, I just, I think it's serious. No, 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 but you put them in. If you, if you like. Oh, no, no, well, you put them in, but. No, we can put them through, you know, we're an entrance, we, we have a, I won't go, it feels like yesterday's.
Yes, I understand, you said bathing in the bathroom, I know.
But, but, but so those. But, but those things are going on.
Yeah.
And there are parental concerns. You know, two students passing out in a bathroom, or we had an ambulance has come.
Yeah.
We could at least did a timeframe of.
Right.
You know.
Oh, one percent.
All right.
Totally understand this is being recorded right now, no one's asked me about my budget, so I think, okay. Uh, so I'm fine either way, uh, there was just, there was a couple that was added in after the safety grant to cover, so.
Actually, it's a good suggestion, because.
Nope. Yeah, it wasn't wrong, exactly, I think we're looking forward, but.
We discussed, you know, as a community. Whether we. Are in favor of or not in favor of cameras, um, in. In the school building, have we discussed that as a community?
As a school community?
We had my. Yeah.
Yeah. And I, we don't, I don't think we've had officially a discussion, I mean, not at the higher level, I don't know about your building.
Yeah, well, we discussed it at, you know, board meetings and facilities, facilities brought it to the board.
About wanting cameras in the schools in general?
I think it talks more about people outside of this room, entire school.
Oh, okay.
How do they feel about being on camera, we're talking about putting in our policy that you can't take pictures and videos of people, and in the same meeting, we're talking about putting cameras all over the school.
Oh, that's way different.
It's way different, because it's without your consent or knowledge, when you, we have, if we would have, you know, we would have signs. Saying, you know, you're.
Premises under surveillance.
Under surveillance, yeah, yeah, that, yeah, that's totally.
But I'm just saying, I think what you're gonna say as a staff and faculty, has everybody else been approached by how they feel about?
I think it's.
And that I don't know.
I I just think it's important, by the way, uh, my opinion on. Cameras is they're essential part of safety, you know, and, you know, and they should be, um, you know, in our school buildings, that's my personal opinion, they've. They've been in, um. Just about every school building that I've been in, um, back in, back to the. Back to the nineties. Um. You know, so, you know, I agree, you know, as a, as a safety measure, um, that it's important to be able to do that, just like. You know, cameras on the community. So, but but I think it's important when we talk about, you know. Bigger initiatives, you know, that that have the potential to change the culture. You know, of the school environment, that we should have those discussions as a, as a school community before it gets put in the budget, so. If if if, you know, and and I'm not, if if the horse is already out of the barn, I'm not gonna, you know, get in the way of that. You know, but in the future, I would prefer to see any big initiatives. Have those discussions, this is why. Um, and sometimes you just use a leadership prerogative, you know, to say, no, this is important.
Yeah.
You know, like John is saying, you know, no, this is important, this will help me do my job, this will help me keep you safe.
Keep you safe, yeah.
Um, so, but, you know, have those discussions. Uh, prior, so it's planning is is very critical.
This is back to the furniture. Or the discussion, um, from what I have in my budget, seventeen thousand dollars for this.
Yeah, and I don't know if all of that is the replacement, I think, I think. Sean's just been close around for the replacement, but yeah, I see that too, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
So that's, that could be.
They're all external.
I assume we had some.
We have facial. We, I was just about to say, we have face.
I got, okay, so.
Now everyone.
Now everybody.
Oh, everybody.
Everybody knew it. So, okay, so, um, was. Is that, do we want to vote tonight? Well, we don't have a number, but do we want to at least, um, that we want to. Look, do we want to make a decision whether or not we want to have a warrant article for that, for the replacement cycle furniture, so that can be communicated to the budget committee that. We've had the discussion, we just need to get the number, blah, blah, blah.
I think we should.
Okay, so, um. We don't really have a number to put in the motion, so we just come to consensus right now? Are we all in agreement on that? Okay, great, yeah, then you can pass that along on. Next Thursday.
Do you want me to go ahead and take it out? Or do you want to have a discussion with the budget committee?
Do you, oh, take it out of the bud, I would say take it out.
Take it out, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
We're, budget committee is made in Tuesday. Right, right, so I'll take it out, I, you know, I, I really think that. You know, they had asked us in the, at the budget. Meeting the other day, is is this your final number, and and you know, we thought it was, but. I think it it goes a long way to showing that we're trying to bring it down by bringing them a smaller number, yeah.
Done, right, yeah, yeah, still working.
Yeah, I think, and that's what I, I think I said, we still have a couple of sessions, we can take stuff out, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that whatever the replacement cycle is, and that thirty six thousand.
And fifteen.
That's almost like fifty.
Fifty one thousand.
That's good.
Yeah.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, thank you, Justin, thank you, John, thank you, Kim. Thank you, Julia. Did, yeah, thank you, Julia, yeah, yeah, we did have a little work. Um, all right, staff development?
I am in staff meeting because I was doing, but it's so, so Karen's gonna be so polite.
She is. Um, yeah, so staff development committee, Matt, um, we discussed priorities, um, around, uh. Looking at what teachers were looking for, especially for the March professional development day, um, but overall, particularly, but, um. And, um, discussed what that day might look like and asking. It, it, we had some discussions around our, it was interesting about some of the priorities where the teachers were looking for professional development. Um, so, uh, the outcome was that we will, uh, the plan. Most of the P B day, on that day particularly, will be run by teachers. So we'll start, I'll, I'll get the word out for teachers to see who wants to do what, but, um, that's what we discussed that day.
Great, that's good. Yeah. All right, uh, legislation and H S B A, I had some legislative stuff printed off, and it's still on my printer, so I don't have much about that, but they send the emails out to everybody, so you can check that out, um. Student scholarship, we talked about, um, so, yeah, next week I'm going to Georgia for a conference for COSBA, the Council of State School Boards Association, which is the group that. We, uh, were part of forming, that when we broke, when the H S B A broke away from the N S, N S B A, so, um, and the, the, um. Our board member for at H S B A who went to the COSBA, like founding stuff and wrote the bylaws and did all that. She has, uh, now been, uh. A voter, they elected her, the the board elected, uh, her to be the Chair of the National Association. So that left a, an opening on the board for a New Hampshire person, so I've moved up, because I'm the President of H S B A, I've moved up. Been a board member on the National Association now. So. I get to add that to my list of stuff to do, which is, but it's great, it's gonna be good, so, um, we'll bring, be bringing you back more information and things, ways that. COSBA can help our board, and we can, you know, sort of same kind of stuff H S B A did, but now it's just COSBA, but it'll be, I'll be getting stuff up on the national level now. So. All right. Pass, you probably don't have anything. Um, no, we're postponing, um, today's meetings next month. Right now, it's on the fourteenth, we'll discuss, we're gonna change it to the. All right, select my Sean.
Uh, no update, the, um, this was the first meeting I've, uh, been able to get to since the Christmas craziness with the post office, um, and wasn't a whole lot there, so.
Is Bill, uh, Hodgman still on?
Yeah.
He is.
Bill, do you have anything from Selectman?
I do not, no.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Uh, facilities. Probably covered.
Uh, that's the twentieth, and you know what we're gonna be talking about.
Uh, community connections, um, I had something, but in the interest of time, I'll talk about next month. Uh, do you have anything?
I don't.
All right. Uh, behavioral support.
No meetings scheduled.
Okay, and joint loss?
I, I still haven't heard.
Yeah, like, if you have a, if you have a president or a chair or anything, yeah.
I know that, yeah.
I think we have a meeting scheduled later this month.
For joint loss?
Yeah.
When?
Hold on, I'll go look.
Thirty, thirty.
They send with everyone that I need told. Normally against. I don't, well, I was, I was elected last. Right after the last.